Evening and welcome to the March 28th meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Garpettian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Thank you. Next.
Next is a flag salute, which will be led by Councilmember Garpettian, followed by the invocation. Please rise.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our great nation. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. The great American writer and Nobel laureate William Faulkner said in a 1958 interview, "Always dream and shoot higher than you know you can do. Don't bother just to be better than your contemporaries or predecessors. Try to be better than yourself." As we face familiar and new challenges in our local county, state, and federal governments, let us pray that we aspire to be better than ourselves through thought, work, and deed. Let us work to uphold the values that unite us as Americans and as residents of this great city to build the strong and prosperous communities and neighborhoods where everyone feels respected and valued as a member of the vast tapestry of our American nation. We also pray for the safety of those who serve in our armed forces. Please watch over them and return them safely to their loved ones. As always, we pray for peace here and around the world tonight and always. Amen.
Amen. And next item, please.
Next item is a report of the clerk. The agenda for the March 28, 2017 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, March 23, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next.
At 3A is the presentation/agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, April 4, 2017.
Thank you. Mrs. Beers.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for April 4, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. For the City Council meeting in the evening to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a few consent items. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is regarding a landscape contract, a ward of contract. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, rental of crane and rigging truck with operator services. City Attorney, increasing the contract cap for outside counsel that provides legal advice on the cities and the Glendale successor agencies, excuse me, capital construction, renovation, and repair projects. Director of Library Arts and Culture, acceptance of grant funds for the California Literacy and English Acquisition Services Program grant and the Adult Education Block grant. And lastly, on consent, is Director of Public Works and Chief of Police, this is regarding the Glendale Police Department Museum. We have two items under hearings. Fire Chief, this is renewal of Weeda Bateman Services Agreement with the County of Los Angeles. And lastly, Director of Public Works, vacation of a portion of Montrose Avenue. This is the northwesterly of Locust Center Avenue at 2817 Montrose Avenue. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And what's next, please?
Next is at 3B Lieutenant John Gilkerson, 30 years of service recognition and award.
I already think I have something for...
This is Deputy Chief Povolitis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's my honor to present John Gilkerson for his 30 years of service, or I should say, 30 years of full-time service to the city of Glendale. Well, I'll share a few, I'll share a few photos, the ones that we can share. You know, John has kind of a unique history because if you, if you get to know John, you'll find out, first of all, he's a third-generation Glendalean. His grandfather actually moved here from Pennsylvania about 100 years ago. And his aunt was one of the, or was in the first class at Hoover High School and actually composed their alma mater. So, John truly comes from a Glendale family, was born right here at Glendale Memorial, and went through the local schools of Montrose Elementary, which I think is no more. Hang on, hold on that one for a second. Which is no more. Rosemont Junior High and then CB High School. And as he tells me, he wasn't the best student in the world, so he had to study late at night for finals and do a little extra credit to obtain his degree. And then he went to Glendale Community College. You know, since then, he's earned his Bachelor's of Science degree in Emergency Services Management from Union Institute. John, John actually started his, his first job in that little stint between GCC, he actually worked for the City of Los Angeles for Parks and Recreation up in Mammoth on Lake Crowley, but then decided that, you know, maybe the school was a place for him, came back to GCC and got bitten by police work. While John may have been here for 30 years as a full-time employee, he actually started with us as a reserve police officer back in 1981. So, he's really got about 36 years of, of total service to the, to the city. In 1987, he decided that he would go full-time. So, he was, he went to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy, graduated out of Class 236 in July of 1987. And like all new officers, he went and spent a couple of hour, or a couple of years in patrol. And then, you know, when I got here, John was a traffic officer and really enjoyed doing traffic. So, he was, he worked traffic for about seven years. And then there's this little thing with motor officers, as you can see, somehow, they seem to manage to transition to air support. And John did exactly that. In 1999, he transitioned to our air support unit, first as a tactical flight officer working as the observer, and then as a, as a pilot. And in that timeframe, he's got over 2,500 hours of flying time, so he's one of our command pilots. And he's a very accomplished pilot, having had the pleasure of supervising him out there and flying in the right seat while he's flying the aircraft. You couldn't be in better hands. While he was out there, he was also part of the group, if you remember, we had Swiftwater Rescue. He was part of the group that developed that and was certified for Swiftwater Rescue to rescue people out of the LA River. Kind of a challenging thing to suspend a cable or rope from the bottom of the helicopter, be able to grab somebody and then pull them out to, to safety. In July 2006, he left air support because he was promoted to sergeant. He did his couple of years in patrol, but then I think he'll tell you that he went to one of the assignments that he found one of that were the most rewarding and where I suspect many of you met him. From between 2008 and 2013, John was assigned to our community police partnership, otherwise known as our cops unit at the time. And in that assignment, he was very, very engaged with the community. And I'll let him speak for himself, but I think that's where you find out the real meaning of community policing, long-term problem solving, and how you can be creative in solving problems for folks. And he was really very helpful in setting, helping us set some key directions in the police department. He was the one who instituted our community lead officer program while he was there. And he was also a key player in helping us design an area command system to deal with issues in the geographic areas and, and promote geographic accountability. Now, in November 2013, we promoted him up to lieutenant, if I can have the next one. And I don't know, but we had several people tell us that we thought we had a celebrity lieutenant out there, and that we had Lieutenant Harrelson instead of Lieutenant Gilkerson. But somewhere in there, there is, and people do, do somewhat misrecognize him for that. As I said, so for, for about three years, he ended up doing patrol watch commander, area command, which is sort of our core function. And then in September of 2016, he joined us back in traffic, overseeing traffic and, and air support. So, that kind of gives you some of the biographical parts of his career. So, let me give you some of John's accomplishments in summary. In 1986, he was Reserve Officer of the Year. In 1997, he was Officer of the Year for the Glendale Police Department, primarily for his work on a pedestrian safety campaign that he coordinated, which involved working with the schools, the media, and the, and the police department. He's been, you know, we always talk about how our police department is engaged with the community, and John is one of those who is very, very much engaged with the community. He's, was involved in the homeless coalition since 2010, and when that became the continuum of care, he transitioned to that, and he's currently the board chairman for that. He's on the Board of Directors for the Glendale Youth Alliance, one of those valuable programs that puts youth to work and deals with at-risk use. He's been on the Campbell Center Board for over four years. And then internally, I don't know how you do this, for the last 11 years, he's been the captain for the support team for Baker to Vegas, which is, if you want to talk about logistics of making sure everybody is at the right place at the right time for a 120-mile relay race from Baker to Las Vegas, that's it. And, you know, the person who's behind the scenes that making, makes sure it all works. On his personal time, John's going to tell you that he likes working on cars. In fact, he just restored a Jeep for his, his middle daughter, but I can remember, but you've got to ask him how long these projects take, because I can remember he had a Honda that he was working on and rebuilding the engine, which he's going to tell you it took a month. I'm going to tell you it took well over a year, because every time I would ask him about it, it would take a while. So, if you need your car worked on, John's it. Just don't be in a hurry to get it back. He also...
That's John.
Yeah. Really? That's the excuse? No. But, as I said, and he's just restored the Jeep. He enjoys riding his Ninja motorcycle on the weekends. Somewhere in there, he's managed to, he's, he's had a family and been a, been a father. He's had three daughters, Alyssa, 27, Paige, 18, and Sydney, 16. Now, he looks pretty young to me. I think he looks pretty young to you. And so, despite his youthful appearance here, he actually has two granddaughters, Lucy, age four, and Penelope, age two. He's the chocolate vendor to his grandchildren. And according to Lucy, he can fix anything. So, when you get to know John, there are a couple other little just sort of tidbits. He's a history buff and really enjoys the Civil War, and so that's one of those tops there. And Guy Fieri has nothing on John Gilkerson when you come to Diners, Drive-Ins, and Dives, because if you need to know where to eat, that's a hole in the wall. Anywhere in California or on the East Coast, if you sit and talk to John about food, it's one of, it's, it's one of the things that he does best. And, you know, I've had the opportunity to go to training with him, and it's like, you'll end up at some hole in the wall, but I will guarantee you, the food will be absolutely wonderful. And so, not to belabor it, as I said, this is a man who's, who's given the city of Glendale 30 years of very dedicated and very professional service. And not only is he consummate, consummate professional, I got to tell you, he's the consummate community member, and he's got a good heart. So, with that, I present John Gilkerson for 30 years.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff. I had a big speech memorized and most of that's forgotten. Actually, it wasn't very big. I just, I wanted to come here tonight to have, to be recognized for 30 years at council, because not only do I appreciate the recognition, but as I tell a lot of my colleagues, when they come up to these milestones in their career, you really should go be recognized. Well, I don't really like the limelight, but it's not all about them, I say. It's a chance for you to thank the city. So, mostly, I come here tonight to thank the city for 30-plus great years of, of employment here. And so, to the, to the city leaders, present and past, I say thank you. To the other departments that I work with so much, especially over the last decade, I say thank you. To the, to the agency that I work for, which is really premier. I think that this community has, they couldn't do any better for a police agency. But I also think that this police agency couldn't do any better for a community. So, I wanted to come and thank everyone here and everyone out there in TV land. By the way, my apologies to Woody Harrelson. Woody Harrelson is the second most comparison, the second biggest comparison I get. The first was David Letterman, so. Thank you very much.
Well, in, in commemoration for your 30 years of exemplary service, I have to say, I was kind of breathless after hearing all of the things that you've been a part of and programs and community work. It's an honor and a privilege, I'm sure, to have you on our police force. So, we have some gifts. I'm going to keep the gift, this, this envelope, so I'll give this one to, and you two. I think we should all go down and congratulate them. Ari, you can...
And you're much better looking than Woody Harrelson.
I know that we can probably all say that we have the best police department that one could ask for, and it's because of officers like you and those are sitting here before us, in front of us. So, we, we all thank you. Anyone have any comments for?
Well, I just want to thank you for your 30 years of service. That 30 years is a testament of your dedication and commitment to our community, and we really do appreciate it. And Glendale is a better city, safer city, because of you and great police force that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, John was the liaison, I'm trying to remember, was it Parks, was it CDBG, or was it both?
The CDBG.
CDBG. And he's always been involved with the community, pretty much knows everything that's going on, really mainstay for the police department in the city of Glendale. So, thank you for the 30 years of service.
Mr....
And I'm sure, Lieutenant, that in your 30 years, there were many temptations to go to other agencies, but it is your steadfast support and staying with Glendale that gives you that breadth of knowledge. And as, as the captain, as the chief went through all your history, you contain our, our history and our memory, doing traffic safety back in the 90s, air support, motor officer. So, you certainly are a example for all the young officers just getting hired, and I hope that, that they can follow in your footsteps in terms of dedication and involvement in the community.
That's very flattering. Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. I didn't, this is my hometown, and I, and although you hear of agencies doing other things, you know, this is the place to be. Really, they never really outstrip the Glendale Police Department, in my mind. But thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. And next?
Next is at 3C, the mayor's commendation to Glendale High School's oratorical winners.
Where are these two young people, Gallo Lopez and Eliza Pedrosian? Come on up. Hi, it's nice to see you close up, because the last time I saw you, you were on a stage way in front of me. These two participated in the Glendale High School's 108th Annual Oratorical. Gallo, you won first place for the senior class, and Eliza, you were second place for the junior class. And I have to tell everyone, if you have never been to the Glendale High School Oratorical, it is absolutely amazing what these young people do. That you're, I'm trying to remember exactly the prompt that you had, and I believe it had something to do with the administration that we are now faced with, is this new Trump administration, what young people could do to become engaged in our country and in the issues that are coming to the surface. Am I correct? Pretty close?
Yes.
Can I ask either one of you or both of you to just give a little, if you remember, a little excerpt of your presentation? Do you recall? Do you remember any part?
Yes. Would you like us to do the introduction?
That would be perfect, because I think it's, it behooves everybody to hear these young people. Go ahead. Eliza.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We say these words at least twice a week, pledging allegiance to our one nation. However, following the recent elections, America has become exponentially more divided over issues of race, gender, social status, and the deepest of all rifts, politics. Our country has turned from a melting pot of diversity to a bleak world of black versus white, liberal versus conservative, blue versus red. Protests and hate crimes stain the media every day, widening the divide that tarnishes our nation. We are no longer regarded as the mighty influential America. Our reputation is failing domestically and globally. We were once known as America, land of the free and home of the brave. America, protector of the innocent and defender of the weak. Or as Washington described it, America, the great experiment. As the next generation, the future of our country, we hold the power to decide what to do next. We can mend the discord or simply watch the experiment fail.
Thank you. Fantastic. Gallo?
Until recently, many have viewed the United States as the land of hope and opportunity, a place where people could succeed with hard work, regardless of their race or religion. Many immigrants came to America not only to pursue this dream, but to live it. America's welcoming attitudes towards immigrants allowed our country's influence to grow into a sprawling tree that now branches across much of the world, with its leaves of diversity sheltering people from oppression and tyranny. Unfortunately, our current anti-inclusive attitudes of protectionism, nativism, and anti-globalism have become more and more common. Our nation is split along a great schism, isolationism and multiculturalism, that can only be reunited with active participation from our generation. By initiating grassroots movements, we can reach across political, racial, and religious divides. The branches that flourish from these movements will not only spread our ideas of tolerance and diversity, but will also help to reconnect the pieces of our broken nation. Only then will our country reestablish its role as the land of opportunity.
And, and that is just a, just a glimpse of their presentations. I was, I came away from there, and I was so moved. Is this the coach here in the audience as well, or the teacher, or just...
This is our beloved Principal Dr. Wolf from Glendale High School.
Oh, Principal, that's right. I met you, Dr. Wolf. That's correct, yes. Well, you should be very proud of the tradition and, of course, of these kids. So, we're here to...
He's an awesome guy.
Hi, yes, I, I know, I know. Well, I want to present you with commendations, which say in recognition of your remarkable accomplishment in achieving first place and second place at the high school 108th. It is the longest-running oratorical?
It's one of the longest-running high school traditions, contiguous traditions in the United States.
Right. 108 years old. Your passion, aspiration is greatly appreciated, and has influenced students, faculty, and members of the community. And I thank you very much, and I congratulate you, so. And one napper po' evening for them to be here. Okay, and with that, next item, please.
Next item is the consent items, including man's following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. Madam Mayor, we had one card submitted, but let me ask, is Karen Lowe in the chambers?
Yes.
Karen Lowe. Is it on item 4A that you wish to speak on the minutes?
I...
Okay. Yes, then we have one card from the member of the public.
We're pulling 4A.
And I'd like to request pulling 4D and 4E.
4D and 4E. Can you read the others into the, I mean, I'm sorry, can we have a motion for the other?
I'll move the...
Rest of the consent items?
Rest of the consent, calendar.
Second?
I'm gonna, Madam Mayor, since I wasn't here, I'm gonna abstain from 4A, the minutes.
Okay.
I know it's, sorry?
It's been pulled, right?
Yes, it's been pulled.
It's been pulled, okay, yes. So, I second the rest of the calendar, the consent items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did we have a, for a motion and a second?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Councilmembers Garpettian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. And so, we'll take 4A?
4A is the minutes of the special City Council meeting of January 17, 2017, and Joint City Council and Economic Development Corporation meeting of March 14, 2017.
Okay, now it'd be Karen Lowe.
Dean.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Karen Lowe. I live on LaSandra Drive. I'm particularly interested in item number 4A. I wanted to know what specifically the special City Council and the Joint City Council and Economic Development Corporation meeting accomplished in terms of reworking development guidelines to be more in line with the very kinds of things residents have been asking and candidates have been promising. And by that, I mean in terms of controlling development, managing development in a more sustainable way. Was anything specifically done at any of these meetings, either of these meetings, either proposed or discussed on, on those topics?
On the 17th and the 14th, those two meetings? I don't believe so.
Madam...
No, I, yes?
Madam Mayor, I can tell you that the specific item before the council's approval of those minutes, and Ms. Lowe would like, I can show her online where she can actually find the record and also the video accounts of what transpired during those meetings. Hopefully, that can answer her question. And in terms of future agenda items, I can also show you where to find that information as well.
I would like to get those questions on the agenda. The questions I posed just now. I would like to get those on the agenda. Is that Google?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Is it Google to get those questions that I just posed on upcoming agenda?
You, you will be noted, yes. There's a, there will be a record of you having asked those questions, which will be available for people to view when they access the archive of this meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, then. Do we have a motion on the minutes as submitted?
I'll move.
I have to abstain on what she means.
And you have to abstain as well?
Yes, because I wasn't here.
It's just the two of us? Okay.
Okay.
Then they're accepted as submitted?
Yeah, I think the general rule is we abstain if we haven't participated, but it's not required, so I would suggest one of you, if you did review the minutes, or if you could review the minutes, then to vote on them, just because we wouldn't have majority of the council acting on it, on the minutes. Or we can bring it back next, next week.
Hey, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, take a moment.
The minutes for January 17, special meeting indicating...
The minutes for January 17 special meeting indicate that I was absent.
Okay.
Don't remember being absent. And then the minutes for the, oh, okay, so we're, I'm sorry, what item is this, January 17? Yeah, I will abstain from that. But I don't need to abstain from March 14th, but they're both lumped together for whatever reason.
Oh, why don't-
Okay, can we just take it?
Take abstention on each one. So on the 17th for Mr. Sananian and the, and March 14th for Mr. Garpetyan, which I think is what the record reflects. And then with that, you can move, you have the minutes.
Okay, then we have the, okay, we can move the, we can move the minutes. Okay, and without objection, they're adopted. Thank you. So let's move on to 4D.
Madam Mayor, 4D is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding business process review for customer services operation. E1 is motion executing agreement with West Monroe Partners in amount not to exceed $179,000 plus a 15% contingency of $26,850.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at the evaluation of the bids that came in on this project, and it seems like PA Consulting actually received a higher score, but the staff recommendation is for West Monroe Partners-
Yes.
-to receive the contract. And I saw there's an explanation as, as to what, but it sounds a little, you know, vague and so if you can clarify that.
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sananian, if you, I think you may be, just to, you may be looking at the first blush evaluation. If you look over to the next page, you'll see we shortlisted the two firms.
Right.
And in that particular case, West Monroe did come out ahead on that. So after the first initial evaluation, we invited two of the firms back that we felt were best suited to do the work, interviewed both of those in an oral interview process, and then ranked them again.
Okay, so you'll explain why the second time around, the second placeholder became first placeholder then?
And, and so the first, the first graph there shows what their proposal was based on. So just what we read as staff, what they submitted to us in a binder, we read that and ranked the proposal. Then we brought them in and let them go through their presentation orally, answer our questions. We got a better feel for the company. They were very specific. They could do a lot more than they, they were able to do in writing, and as a result of that, they impressed the entire group, who then gave them a higher ranking overall with both their written proposal and their, their oral presentation.
And do we do that with every, every time there's a, an RFP? Do we narrow it down to a smaller group of finalists and then do another stage of-
Councilmember Sananian, often we do. I won't say always, but often we do. We will shortlist, especially if we get a number of firms. We will shortlist to those firms we feel have the best opportunity or have put forth the best proposal, and then we will go through another process where sometimes it will be an internal panel of various departments, maybe just our department, or we may even go outside the depart, or outside the city to, to interview folks. But it gives us a more well-rounded approach. If it's a very simple project, very low cost, we know exactly what we want and it's dead bang, we don't need to go through that process. But this is something that's a little different, it's a little new to us. You're going to see us come back to you in the very near future with our cost of service analysis, and we went through the very same process with both the electric and water on that. So I just think this gives us a more thorough review. It takes a little bit longer, but it is interesting, I will tell you, Councilmember Sananian, that you, you can see things often change when somebody comes in and orally presents. How they present themselves, the type of people that, you know, their familiarity with our city versus somebody who's just given you a boilerplate proposal in writing. Looks good, but then you bring them inside and, and talk to them and they don't know a lot about Glendale. Or on the other hand, the firm will have learned a lot about Glendale and you feel a lot more comfortable with that firm over the other firm. So I think it's a well-rounded process.
I have no more questions.
All right.
I'll move the item.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes, and 4E?
E1 is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding mechanical and field services. E1 is a motion executing amendment number two with ARB Inc. to extend the contract by two years and add to some $400,000 for inspection, maintenance, and repair of equipment at the Grayson Power Plant and add to some money, $2,700 plus $14,000 in contingency for the repair of Grayson Unit Number Three Boiler. Two is a resolution appropriating $106,700 for Grayson Unit Number Three Boiler repairs.
And this one is, so I have two reasons for this. One is it relates to Grayson, and we're spending more money on Grayson. I think the resident should know why, what's happening with Grayson. And the second part is doesn't, it's not an RFP, right?
No, that's absurd.
Whoever was the winner of the initial stage of-
Correct.
...bids is just, we're extending their contract?
Correct.
The question is why and why are we not going to another-
I'll start with the first question, if that's okay. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sananian, ARB, I think you've seen their name in the past. They have gone through competitive processes and they are consistently the only firm that will bid. We believe they may be the only firm who can do the work on the older units. We've had one other, in my time here at GWP, we've had other, one other firm come in and I can almost guarantee you they will never bid again. It cost them a lot of money to, to do the work they did. They had to redo it four different times. It came out right at the fourth time, but if you can imagine, they were working four different times to literally tear it apart and put it back together. My position was it worked when they started and it'll work again when they're done, and they finally got there, but I can guarantee you they lost a lot of money. ARB has consistently shown that they have the tribal memory of these older units and they're able to come in and do the work. I would put it out to bid, but I can tell you that that, that's, I can almost guarantee you that is the only firm that will come in, and if anybody else bids, they won't have the experience on these type of older units. And I, and I know you've heard that story before from me, Mr. Sananian, but it's the bane that we, you know, that we, of our existence with, with the older units at the power plant. And the same reason that Unit Three is in this situation. Unit Three went down at the end of last summer, and quite frankly, we weren't inclined to restart it, period. We were inclined to mothball it. But as we got into a couple of different jams, in other words, we had four go down, we had five go down, we had nine go down, we began to relook at three and see if there wasn't a way that we could at least get it up and running for the summer. So I will tell you, even though this is an amount of $92,000, this is intended to get us to November. And if it gets to November, I'll be pretty happy that we got that far. So this is to get us through the summer. If, if it keeps going, then, then we're even luckier. If it goes down, I'm not inclined to fix it again. So this, this is just a very small minor, I will call it a Band-Aid repair to get us through the summer. ARB believes this, this is beneficial. ARB actually thinks it'll last a little bit longer than that, but the impetus for us to do this is to get us through the summer.
So the $92,000 plus the contingency is just for repair, but $400,000 is for inspection?
I'm sorry, $400,000 will, will re, will put the money back into ARB's general maintenance contract. So we've drawn way down on that because of all of the maintenance that we've been doing at Grayson. That's not just for three, no, no.
Oh, okay.
We have just expended all of the money in ARB's contract for various repairs that we've made to all of the, the units there.
And ARB does maintenance for all of the units at Grayson?
They do, for most all of the units with the exception of the one you're going to talk about a little bit later, which is the, the new GE unit. They pretty much will do the work on all the rest of the units, from units one and two all the way through, through eight, A, B, and C.
And if Unit Three goes down at the end of November, you said?
I, I would say, if I can get it to go to November, I'd be a pretty happy guy. If it went down after that, I would not be back here to recommend that we go any, any further with it. But it is really to get us through the summer.
Once, once it's down, we're done with it?
Yes.
And so this will have no impact on the decision whether to power, repower, I mean to repower Grayson?
This is the bridge to get us to that point where the council makes the decision. Correct.
Okay.
For this budget studies that are coming up, can we get a report as to how much did it cost us to maintain or repair the units in Grayson in this fiscal year?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It's important to-
That's a monthly report that I receive, actually, and we can put it into an annual report and break it down for you by unit. And you will see downtime versus cost and production. So you'll be able to see what the percentage of uptime is versus downtime, cost, and overall megawatt production.
Thank you. So let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Why not let it go down now?
Because you gotta get to the summer months. We're worried about the summer, Mr. Sananian. And at this point in time, we've, we, we know we've got, Unit Four will likely not be here for the summer. If, if we're able to get council approval tonight, we will have Unit Nine back up for the summer. We hope to have Unit Eight, A, B, and C ready to go, and Unit Five, but those are, those are still being worked on as well. So there was a point in time this winter, and thank goodness it was winter, because we just didn't need that, that kind of, of production, and we could get our production elsewhere because loads are down all across the country. You know, we were all the way down to one unit. So as we begin to ramp up, and there's a belief, I'm not a weatherman, you know, but there is a belief that this may be a rather warm summer, and, and the heat may come earlier than usual. So we just want to be prepared.
So then we'll have eight, three, and five?
We'll have eight, five, three, and nine will be back on two with your approval tonight.
And, and what is the life expectancy of these four? I guess I'm asking, how long will they last?
Well, nine is the newest, right? That's the one we're asking. That's 1990's technology? 2004. So you're looking at, that unit we would propose to keep. Regardless-
Regardless of-
Regardless, even in the, if the repower is approved, the other units would all be scrapped. And each of them, as they go down, is, is evaluated as to whether we, we fix it or we leave it.
So let's say, let's say it lasts until November, and, I mean, at some point, we have to make a decision with Grayson, a global decision?
Correct. That will be next May.
That's next May.
Correct.
And now we're approving two years of, of maintenance funds, right? $400,000?
That's correct.
So if we make a decision, council makes a decision next May, it'll take another, more than a year after May for, for anything happening with Grayson to kick into place?
We would probably try to begin the demolition part of it as soon as possible. Maybe we would be, I'm trying to remember the calendar in my head, by the end of that calendar year, so towards the end of fall, beginning of winter of that year. I will say to you on this, Mr. Sananian, the money in there is only spent if we use it. So if we don't need ARB, if we, if we spend $100,000 with ARB and we don't need them for the rest, the $300,000 stays in our bank.
And if they do go through this $400,000 in less time than two years, do they get to come back and ask for more money, or no, this is it? This is what we give them, they have to make to with the $400,000?
Mr. Sananian, we would have to evaluate it based on what our need is at the time. I'd like to be able to tell you that two years will get us to where we want to be. But again, you know, we'll see how we get through this summer. We'll see where we are next, next May, and then I can give you a better answer. I, I would prefer not to continue to fix these. I've said that before. It's, it's not the best expenditure of our funds, but it is what we have to backstop our reliability and our production on.
The money.
Motion?
I'm moving the item.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Councilmembers Garpetyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is city council and staff comments.
And Mr. Garpetyan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to let the public know that I participated in two legislative trips to Sacramento and Washington DC, and in upcoming months or weeks, I will bring a report out as to what happened and what's going on overall. Also, want to let the public know that this Sunday, April 2nd, there is a car show, Cars for Cops. We're raising money for police department, the museum for police department. This is organized by Rotary Noon, as well as where Dugald's Dad's Club on Coneyada Boulevard, 1726 Coneyada Boulevard, right next to Babe Herman Park. I encourage everyone to show up. It's 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's gonna be fun, lots of beautiful cars, good music, hopefully, and, and good food. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else?
I have a question and kind of a request. The young lady, Elaine Park, from Glendale, Glendale resident that disappeared in, I believe, late January, she's still missing. And I believe there's a $5,000 reward for her. Is that our reward? I know we asked for a reward, but-
We did ask, but they're-
The mayor had asked if we could look at that. The investigation is still pending, it's still ongoing. At this point, we, I would be remiss to talk about that investigation, up to and including whether or not to move forward with that award, with that reward per the, the policy that's been established by council.
This is, I mean, the family and the community, Korean-American community is very concerned and they're, I guess they're getting the same answer you just gave us. And they're, you know, they're, they feel helpless trying to understand where it's at, where it's going, I mean, anything that we can do to help.
Certainly I wouldn't do that in the context of a meeting like this, but I would tell you that our detectives have continued to speak with the family and make sure that we are being as direct and yet as sensitive as we can be, trying to balance those two things. But at this point, that's really all I can say at this point.
And did we not set up a fund for rewards?
We did.
Situations, emergencies like this? And I want to call upon my colleagues to suggest a matching $5,000 reward for any information leading to the discovery of this individual, Elaine Park?
I'm not trying to understand what, I'm not trying to understand what the city manager said. Are you saying it, it's not appropriate to put an award at this time, or it's, I, I'm not clear? I would, yeah, I would tell you that, I would tell you that at this point, if we would not, I would not feel comfortable moving forward in that direction because of the presumption that accompanies the establishment of that reward for that information.
What does that mean? When, three years ago, three and a half years ago, there was a cyclist who got run over and then dragged and lost, lost, I believe, lost a limb, and we offered a reward, and we were-
That was a very clear case of, of acknowledgement that a crime had been committed.
Oh.
I would be, and I'd be much more comfortable responding back to council through city attorney's office, through the PD at a time after this.
Very well. Thank you. I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Najarian? Okay, then it's my turn. I want to start by saying that Cat on a Hot Tin Roof is now at the Antias. If you enjoy theater, it's fantastic, the acting is amazing, and buy your tickets and go and see this fantastic production. That was the opening night. I want to congratulate tonight the Montrose Shopping Park Association. It's been, I think, an extra week. We didn't have a meeting last week, so this is kind of delayed, but they did their wine walk project, and it was, again, a huge success, huge success. People from all over the area and beyond came to Montrose, became aware of Montrose, shopped Montrose, and it, I, I just want to congratulate everyone up there that had anything to do with that. I also want to announce that every, I think everyone knows that this is National Women's History Month, and the, I want to congratulate Rockhaven because they were a selection as a featured historic property for Women's History Month. And that was, of course, because it's, they were listed as one of the best extent examples of an early 20th century women-owned, women-serving private sanitarium in the state. So I want to congratulate friends of Rockhaven and Rockhaven for that distinctive honor. Sunday, I attended a, a gathering, an interfaith gathering called Together We Stand. And the reason for this gathering was to, to alert people, residents, the area, the country, about just what these kids were talking about, antisemitism that is going on. And there were clergy from every religion that you can think of saying beautiful words about this sort of antisemitism, that sort of hatred is not going to divide this country. We are going to be stronger because of it. We are going to come together, and of course, the theme was, we stand together, we stand together. And so I want to just show my appreciation to Mount Sinai Memorial Parks and the Theodore Bacall Legacy Project. And finally, and on a sadder note, I'd like to ask my colleagues a request that we close the meeting tonight in memory of Peace Corps volunteer Cameron Burton of Glendale. Cameron was 25 years old. She died in an automobile accident in Malawi- Cameron was 25 years old. She died in an automobile accident in Malawi on March the 20th. Cameron, her passion for others and drive to do all she could do to make the world a better place are what made her a truly outstanding citizen of our community. From an early age, Kami embraced her love of traveling and helping others. Whether it was visiting relatives in Europe or studying abroad in India, Cameron was always open-minded and excited to learn about other cultures. When she applied for the Peace Corps, Cameron noted that being easygoing would help her thrive as a volunteer. Being patient is a vital strategy to use when interacting with anyone, but especially when dealing with people whose culture difference differs from my own, she said in her aspiration statement. Peace Corps staff were impressed by how committed and energetic Cameron was about her service. She worked at the local health center, helping her community address concerns around malaria and ending preventable child and maternal deaths. Despite having been a volunteer for less than a year, Cameron's energy and impact were notable. She was passionate about working with girls on empowerment issues and improving the lives of women in her community. She is remembered by her community as someone who cared deeply and was very dedicated to her work and to the people of Imbugweeni. Cameron graduated cum laude from Tulane University with the Bachelor's of Science in Public Health and continued her studies in Tulane School of Public Health and Tropical Medicine, receiving a Masters of Public Health in 2015. She is survived by her mother, Dr. Carol Ann Burton, and her father, Alastair, and her three sisters, Katryana, Alexandra, and Jillian, her brother-in-law, and her niece, Isabel. So I ask that we adjourn the meeting tonight in her memory. Thank you. And that concludes my comments. Next item, please.
Next item is the community event announcements. This is the three-minute portion.
Okay, I have two cards.
We have two cards for that, and as they make their way up to the podium, I would like to also make another community event announcement. And that is announcing that for the first time in Glendale election history, we'll be having weekend early voting, as many of our residents know, Madam Mayor and council. April 4th is Election Day, and people have already received their voter information guides. Many people who are permanent absentee voters have received their ballots. But for those who may have questions or who wish to cast their vote because they'll be unable to on Tuesday, in following a pattern that has been spreading across the state and hopefully will spread across the country, we're gonna have our election center open on Saturday and Sunday preceding Election Day to help answer questions, to issue ballots to individuals who would like to vote and may not be able to on Tuesday, or who may otherwise want to turn in their ballots rather than putting it in a mailbox. And that is located, our election center is located at 131 East, sorry, 131 North Isabel Street in the police community room, and will be open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And I'll try to, for more information, people can go to glandalevotes.org, but this should be a little clearer to see for our viewers at home. Thank you.
You're welcome. First card is Lieutenant Oscar Rodriguez, another one of our fine men in Navy Blue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable members of council, distinguished city staff. My name's Oscar Rodriguez. As you can see, I'm a police lieutenant with the City of Glendale Police Department, very proud of that, but I'm also a very proud Rotarian. So I'm here to make a couple announcements for the Glendale Rotary Club today. We're sponsoring, what City Councilman Garpetian already plugged for you, we have a car show coming up in Lot 34, which is right across the street from Verdugo Park. This is this Sunday, April the 2nd. We're gonna have, we have over 90 cars already registered, which is gonna be a tremendous event. We're gonna have great music, you mentioned that as well. So come on down, it's completely free to the public. We're gonna have hot rods, exotics, classics, motorcycles, Jeeps, we're gonna have all kinds of cars. It's gonna be a really great event. The Dads Club's gonna provide food and beverages there, right next door to us, so it's gonna be a great event. Come on down if you have a chance. And I'm also, we're also putting on the Jewel City Fun and Fitness Day. That's gonna be on May the 21st at our Glendale YMCA. We're gonna be benefiting the Glendale Adventist Medical Missions, the Glendale YMCA and the whole men of Glendale. We're gonna have a 30-mile fitness ride, a fun family ride around the city, police escorted. We're gonna have Glendale family festivities at the Glendale YMCA, so it's gonna be a great event. Again, that's Sunday, May the 21st, and that's gonna be a morning event from 9:00 to 2:00 PM, and same thing with our car show. So, thank you so much.
That keeps growing every year.
Yes, it does.
You know, you started, I remember it started in Verdugo Park, and you had about, maybe 7,500 people, and last year you had hundreds.
Tremendous.
Yes, so it's a lot of fun for families. May 21st.
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Steve Mills?
I'll put it up. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for having me here to speak on behalf of the Pellicone Estates community. We are asking everyone to come to this meeting tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:30 at 780 Flower Street, the California High Speed Rail Authority Grade Separation Information Meeting. A little bit about the Pellicone neighborhood and why this is so important to us. Pellicone is there between San Fernando Road and Glen Oaks, and it, it is at the very mouth of the San Fernando Valley, so there's a lot of things coming through our neighborhood. Of course, the railroad comes right next to the neighborhood, also two freeways and two major waterways, two gas pipelines, two crude oil pipelines. You hear about all these protests. We've got two already. Also, the power plant and Grand Central Industrial Park. This is what the, is in the plans right now, and it's now in the stages where they want community input about, so they can put together an environmental impact report. The rail will be elevated up to 30 feet along San Fernando Road, and although these plans are not final, they're nowhere near final, there will be many issues as far as, this is, this is what it looks like now, the Grand View Crossing. And go to the next slide.
It's going on its own, but.
Oh, okay. This is the, what it will look like. It's about the same height as a freeway, and it would be similar to a freeway underpass, and it has many of the same issues as freeways have because it's just as high.
Do you want the slide?
Go to the next one. This is what it looks like, this is what it looks like now along San Fernando Road. And, yeah, this is what it would look like if it was 30 feet high. Now, they haven't decided on this exactly, but there are concerns for the neighborhood, of course, and go to the next one. The issues are safety, if a derailment were to occur, the aesthetics, 30-foot high could be very unattractive, and with track graffiti, and noise issues because the rails are higher. Now, it's all the rails, it's not just the California High Speed Rail. It would be all tracks, freight trains, everything. And so the neighborhood is, wants to have input from, from everyone, including everyone in Glendale, and we certainly invite everyone in from this council to come, and anybody involved in the city government to come as well, because this is a very important issue for us. Are there any other? Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Tomorrow night, 5:30, 7:30?
5:30, 7:30.
780 Flower.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have a, I have a, before I call the next person, I would like to call in Mr. Councilmember Najarian. He has a very special announcement to make for a very special person.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna mention this, but I got a text from my mom, and now she's making me feel all guilty. My mom was one of 10 people who were awarded the Woman of the Year of the 25th Senatorial District by Senator, our state Senator Anthony Portantino. Congratulations, Mom. You're in great company, and I know no one else deserves it this year besides you, and I hope we're okay with each other now. I won't do it again, Mom, I'm sorry. So, thank you, Mayor. You were there, and it was really a great group of women, very high achievers.
Very impressive group of women, and your mom was, of course, one of the, one of the best, and she was so happy and pleased, and I was, I was proud to be there to, to support her. Okay, so, next card is from Kathy Morphopolis. Morphopolis? Hope I got that correct.
Thank you. So I've lived in Glendale for a long time, but I have never come to speak, so I had heard from one of my neighbors that there were some meetings on the way Proposition 64 will affect our city, and there was supposedly people speaking out in support of Glendale going into the business of cultivation and selling of pot. So as, I have a lot of neighbors, we were all shocked, so I was elected to come and give our collective point of view.
Can you give us your name for the record, please?
Kathy Morphopolis. So, so obviously I oppose, and my reasoning is, is that I was born in the early 50s, and in my youth, tobacco companies at that time were adamant that the raising and the smoking of tobacco was safe, and that it generated jobs, and that it increased tax revenue, and it was a win for everybody. And of course, in reality, that's not how it turned out. You know, 440,000 deaths per year, lots of suffering, a lot of people started into smoking tobacco because it was considered safe, and I'm of that age bracket where friends and family have died. So, in reality, the costs far outweighed the money raised, so it's short-term thinking that we're gonna go into the business of this field and there won't be a lot of risks and costs. So, for example, 15 billion a year is raised from the taxes of tobacco, 85 billion is spent. So beside all the unfortunate deaths, just, the money just doesn't add up. So some say that smoking pot won't have the same effects as smoking tobacco, but American Lung Association doesn't agree, and that makes no sense whatsoever. So if Glendale does go into this business, it's gonna be in conflict with federal law. So the current administration, everybody knows, has stated its opposition to recreational pot use, and that it would have the ability to enforce its laws against the cities that go into the recreational business. So, for example, Denver, a few days ago, announced that it would, considering reclassifying all its pot into medical pot to escape federal prosecution and to protect the businesses that have gone into this field. So it would reclassify so that instead of the tax rate being this, it would be 2.9. So they would have a fraction of the tax income and all of the ramifications, of which we don't really know what they are. It's the same thing with the tobacco thing. It was all sort of, it's all gonna be fine. It turned out it's not all gonna be fine. So, that, thank you. Yes, I forgot I was, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
You said you heard from your neighbors that this is going, it's.
You know, I heard.
Glendale is going into this business, or is allowing this cultivation and sales?
No, what they said was that the council was, had a survey, which we've all gone to the, you know, our little group, our neighbors are, went on to the city site where it has a survey. And the survey basically states out your options, you know, the city, should we cultivate? Should we raise? Should we sell? Where should we sell? Are you in agreement, opposition? So the survey is going to supposedly express the residents of Glendale, but the fact that you can't prove whoever's doing the survey is from Glendale, it just alarmed my neighborhood that you guys are gonna decide based on a survey, and hopefully, my neighbors and other people like me will have more direct communication with you folks to realize we truly think it's a bad idea.
Do we have a survey like that online?
Oh, yeah.
We do. You'll recall that. You'll recall that, that the vote in the November election, the measure was supported across all precincts in the city. And to help better understand whether or not that was a fluke, what the veracity was, how strong that support or lack of support was, we put the survey up. We collected a bunch of information online. We also held a community meeting with the idea being that we would ultimately come back to the council. Now, this council, previous councils, did not allow medical marijuana, and I would venture a guess that absent Prop 64, that really wouldn't change, medical or recreational, but rather if the state law changed and if Glendale voters, not just people on surveys online, but actual voters in the community, expressed themselves a certain way, then you at least have the obligation to look at it. And that's basically what you've done, but as the speaker indicates, the new administration seems to be stating that the 2013 Justice Department's enforcement mechanism, the so-called COAL memo, would be revoked. And if that is revoked, then marijuana goes back to the degree of enforcement that had existed before that, which would indeed make, would provide that California and any city in California would be in conflict with federal law. So at this point, we are continuing to wait to see what this new administration does, because what we don't want to do is place ourselves in violation of said federal law. But that's effectively where we are today. Okay, thank you.
Spiro Morphopolis?
It's not, it's not a coincidence that we have the same last name.
I gathered that. I did, yes.
So, yeah.
Say your, state your name, please.
Spiro Morphopolis. We've been residents of Glendale for 17 years and very happy to be here. It's the first time here at your council meeting. Thank you for allowing us to speak, and I'd like to say the invocation, I thought, was fantastic. Really appropriate, and particularly for the subject. Again, I'd like to just add my comments to my wife's, that regardless of what the federal government decides to do with respect to enforcement, I would plead to you as the decision-makers for our community to not favor the sale or cultivation of marijuana in our city. And I think there are, there are multitudes of reports that have all kinds of data that are available to you. I've got two that I'll just cite very, very briefly. One is from California itself. Another one is from an organization, a national organization, it's called SAM, the Smart Approaches to Marijuana, and their tagline, interestingly, is Preventing Another Big Tobacco. The folks that are advising this group include the Honorable Patrick Kennedy, doctors from Harvard University, Johns Hopkins University, a number from the University of Colorado who have experience with the Colorado Experiment, if you will. And just a couple of things I'll cite here. Health risks, here's just one quick one. According to every, to virtually every scientific review, including a 2016 World Health Organization report, marijuana is addictive and harmful. For me, that's enough said right there, but a couple more points. There's been a little shift in Colorado's experience, that it's not just about marijuana and smoking marijuana. Now they're taking the THC, the actual ingredient, and putting it into things like gummy candy, soda, and lollipops. Who does that appeal to? You don't have to think too long to understand what the long-term potential implications are for such a, an enterprise. A lot has been said in the press from the advocates of the proposition that got voted in, which frankly, I was shocked that Glendale residents voted for it, and I think it's just a matter of being misinformed. The costs far outweigh the tax revenue. Over half of the pot money proposed for drug prevention, education, and treatment in Washington, for example, never materialized. And the bureaucracy in Colorado consumes a significant portion of the marijuana tax increase, and as you heard Kathy say, they're actually gonna lower their taxes, so who knows, they may be negative right out of the gate. Never mind what's gonna happen 20 years from now. So with that, thank you for your time, thank you for your attention, and I hope you, you do get more educated on the subject. get more educated on the subject.
Thank you. And, yeah, go ahead.
So, isn't it a better idea for us to be briefed first before we start holding public hearings on this?
I think the idea was to brief you based on, obviously you have a good deal of knowledge on Prop 64, regardless of how folks voted for or against, and we would be able to update you with the information that we gleaned from that meeting and from the survey, both the closed and open-ended questions. We haven't done that in a public meeting because the $24,000 question is, what is the federal government going to do? Because, again, heretofore, Glendale City Council has not allowed marijuana, medical, let alone recreational. So, that sea change on a matter of policy is going to be impacted, you know, the major differential is Prop 64, which could very well be invalidated by the feds, so we're waiting to see what the feds are, so then we would bring that. So, I appreciate the comments most definitely, but we're all waiting to see what's gonna happen.
So, I think the bottom line is, when it happens, if and when it happens, come back. Next is Jamie Sarr.
She had to leave.
Okay, all right, thank you. Tony Passarella, followed by Jason Schlotter.
He fell asleep. Good evening, Council, viewing public, Tony Passarella. Exhibit A is a flyer, very expensive flyer, that Mr. Jarian sent out, and it says, who voted against these projects? He voted no on eight projects here, building projects. And what we have here, people, is a ruse. And I'd like to know from Mr. Jarian, which of these he voted yes on stage one and stage two of these projects? It's basically a fake advertising. And Mr. Jarian, you said at a candidate forum, actually right here in council chambers, that nobody has fought developers more than I have, and that's a quote. The truth is, Mr. Jarian, nobody has voted yes on building more than you have, 12 years of it, by the way. I didn't see these on your list anywhere. Modera, Legendary Towers, Brand Apartments, Onyx, Lamley Lofts, Hampton Inn and Suites, Embassy Suites, Aloft Hotel, Tropical, Radera, Link, Elevate Lofts, 416 on Broadway Apartments, Brio Apartments, Courtyard by Marriott, 36 parking spaces. Are you kidding me? And they got a banquet room there and where are people gonna park? I have no idea. And the Sears Building, Art Jarian said, and I quote, "I would like to register the property as an historic," he said this at one of the candidate forums, "I would like to register the property as an historic site for later adaptive use." What kind of adaptive use are you talking about? Condos or maybe a hotel? 12 years is enough, Mr. Jarian, the President of the United States only gives eight years, and you want 16? I don't think so. The people have had enough with your thin skin when criticized, I believe, and your lack of self-control at times on the dais. It didn't work forever for Dave Weaver, did it? I think the people got sick and tired of his antics up there. Your record proves you can't be trusted when it comes to building projects, nor can we trust the new candidates. Glendale needs a new face on the dais, someone who has spent 60 years in the city of Glendale, attended Glendale schools, has been the people's champion pushing back against higher taxes, illegal transfer of funds, and overdevelopment of the city of Glendale. Mike Mohill is a common sense candidate, let's give him a chance. On April 4th, next Tuesday, I encourage the citizens of Glendale to vote for Mike Mohill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, please.
James Schlotter, did you owe Mr. Jarian?
I just would like to remind the people in the audience that the President, the President of the United States has a few more powers than the city council members do. And you disrupted the League of Women Voters televised meeting, Mr. Passarella, just as you're doing now, so I wish you could control yourself. You're out of order, Mr. Passarella.
Jason Schlotter.
Hi, Jason. Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff of the city of Glendale. My name is Jason Schlotter of the Glendale Communitas Initiative. As you know, we partner with individuals and families to create pathways out of poverty. We opened our doors in Glendale in 2015, and today I'm here to announce our third satellite location in the city. In partnership with Wellness Works, we will be, starting on April 5th, serving veterans and active service members, including National Guardsmen and reservists and their families, exclusively on the Wellness Works campus, which is at 540 West Broadway. This is helping with resume building, money management, budgets, other assistances and social services. We're very happy for this partnership and we'd just like to make this announcement that it is free. They do have to bring their DD-214 for veterans and documentations for those who are actively engaged in our services, National Guards and Reserve included. That's that announcement. Separately, I would like to commend you on your staff at the Pacific Park Library, particularly Hala Shanuda. She is an excellent ambassador for the city's services. We are very happy for this partnership that provides a space third Thursdays of the month and working with the Department of Social Services. They have gone above and beyond to help the citizens of this city and you should be very proud of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to announce that it's great to hear that about Hala because she is one of my former students. So, yes, yes, thank you, Jason. And next item, please, that's the last card.
Under action items, AA is the city attorney and chief of police regarding local enforcement of federal immigration laws. 8A1 is a resolution affirming the statement of the chief of police regarding the detention of individuals based on immigration status.
Thank you, thank you. I brought this item forward so we can make clear to our citizens the position on immigr, our position on the immigration issue. With the tenor of the federal government, since the change in administrations on the 20th of January, I find that, and I think we all find, that cities and residents all over the country are feeling the fear of immigration enforcement. Residents fearing deportment, deportation, or detention. So, tonight, I think our goal is to clarify, to calm the fears, and to clarify the Glendale Police Department position, the chief of police statement, and our council's position. We are all committed to respect our residents. We are a very diverse community and we value everyone in this community. And I know that, and I want to thank those of you that are here and watching, who have emailed us, who have met with us, and who have concerns. And tonight, I hope that we can address all of the thoughts and ideas of everyone that has become so engaged in this issue. Because I have to tell you that this just shows me, and all of us, your concern for the residents that live here in Glendale, for your neighbors, your friends, your coworkers, et cetera. I know there are two areas that you're interested in or that you have issues, concerns. One is the eight, the eight-point provisions of the ACLU and also the detention services. So, I'm going to begin our conversation tonight and our discussion with, by asking our city attorney, Mr. Garcia, to walk us through those eight ACLU provisions. Since the enforcement of the, these provisions are predicated on the criminal action, I want, if you would, please, give us the impact that these provisions might have on our own police department and their ability to enforce the law as they so see.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, members of council, let me start, actually, by restating what the police chief's policy is, what the statement he made, because I think, just to provide the context for everyone. And what it says is, "The Glendale Police Department does not have the authority nor the responsibility to incarcerate or detain individuals solely based on immigration status. Our fundamental duties are based on public safety, serving the community while focusing efforts primarily on crime prevention and law enforcement. Our responsibility is to protect the lives of the community. We are sworn to serve and honor the principles of democracy upon which this country was founded." So, with that, that was, that was the, and I think Mr. Ochoa read that a couple weeks ago, as the chief had propounded that last month. And you've asked us to review the eight recommended provisions that have been proposed to incorporate into the resolution, and I'll go through them in summary and talk about essentially what is the, either what's the legal requirement or what's the policy and practice of the department. And then certainly Deputy Chief Pavelitis or Ms. Marino from my office can expand on it. So, the first two requirements have to do with detentions and warrants, and the first one, the first proposed provision requiring that we require a judicial warrant prior to detaining anyone, and the second one, that we not arrest or detain or transport individuals based solely on their immigration status. And those first two have to do with detainers. And as the report notes, as our staff report notes, detainers are equivalent of requests and a local agency must comply with the Fourth Amendment and obtain a warrant to detain an individual longer than we otherwise would be allowed to. So, these two statements are already basically a restatement of the law and a restatement of Glendale's current practice and policy. With respect to the third point, which is defined here as defined access or interview rule, which essentially states that unless acting pursuant to a court order or for a legitimate law, for, excuse me, law enforcement purpose that is unrelated to the enforcement of civil immigration law, no Glendale official shall permit ICE immigration customs enforcement to access city facilities. Well, for investigative purposes, again, just to reiterate, that is the practice of the department to limit access to anyone, limit access to those persons who have legitimate law enforcement purposes only. With respect to number four-
I'm sorry, can the federal government argue, make the argument, that immigration enforcement is a legitimate law enforcement authority? And can they come back with that? Because all of a sudden, that'll negate our position.
They can't, but what I'm telling you is that, you know, ICE, any ICE agent or any agent of the federal government who has authority, has to exercise the authority in which they're granted under federal law or under state law. What I'm saying is that our policy is consistent with this provision already. You have to, anybody, whether it's ICE or anybody else, has to identify what lawful purpose they're serving to access one of our facilities. So, with respect to the fourth point, which is called in this, in this document, the clear identification rule, and again, this is to require that ICE agents or other federal agents clearly identify themselves when they're working within Glendale facilities. Again, both in our, in the Glendale Police Department's written policy and by practice, the department does require all persons to clearly identify themselves. Number five, the don't ask rule, that Glendale officials not inquire into the immigration and citizen staff, that's actually the essence of the policy that the chief's pronouncement addresses. So, this is already what we're talking about here, and so from our perspective, it doesn't seem necessary to restate that because that's why we're here. I'll address the sixth point in a second. The seventh and eighth points have to do with discriminatory surveillance and also fair and impartial policing. Again, in order to comply with the Constitution, in order to comply with the law, these are the policies and practice of GPD. And so, it would be redundant to state that again because that's how we operate, and it's also written into all of our policy guides and all of our practice manuals. With respect to the sixth provision, which is labeled in this document as the privacy protection rule, and prohibits Glendale officials from voluntarily releasing personally identifiable information, in most circumstances, the department doesn't voluntarily release information. But in connection with, you know, inter-agency and regional cooperation efforts, where the department must share information for regional and inter-agency criminal prosecution and criminal law enforcement. In addition, has been stated, and I think it's well documented in our report and even documented in this document here before you, the federal statutes, 8 U.S.C. 1373, limits us, or precludes the city from prohibiting local officials, any city employee, from providing information regarding immigration status to ICE or any other federal agency. So, that's, we have to always keep that in mind, that's a limitation on our authority, on the disclosure of information. So, from our perspective, and you'll see a lot of, even in this particular document, they document that 1373 is gonna control. So, from our perspective, it's better to state upfront, this is what we do. From our perspective, and you probably are gonna hear from Chief Pavelitis, the policy that's before you addresses all these things. What is, this particular document is basically a restatement of what the city does. And so, from our perspective, the chief wants to put forward the policy that reflects the values of his department, and he feels that what you have before you addresses those issues.
Okay. So, then what I'm gathering, in rather a simplistic way, is the fact that we are doing all of these things and there's, it would be redundant to just restate them because we're doing them. And our police department has been performing this way since, what, forever?
Decades.
For decades. And so, it would be, it would, it wouldn't be necessary for us to put all of these in there because we're already doing them.
And the chief's statement that's in the report and the restatement of the GPD policy is a reflection of the values of the department, and that's the controlling document that governs all policy as it relates to immigration issues.
Okay. All right. I have eight-
About the detention center, can we talk about that specifically?
The detention center and the services?
We do have a, an agreement that exists from 2007, and I think that speaks also to the points both, Madam Mayor, that you've made and even that city attorney is alluding to, because it exists and is still a reflection of the operation that we have today. To the extent that we have this agreement with ICE, I think it's been pointed out repeatedly, at least in the emails that I've seen, that it is not utilized very much as a function of the revenue that is derived. And if it is not generating a good degree of revenue, then what is the utility? And I would offer to you that, to the extent that it doesn't generate a lot of revenue, that is, you know, a reflection of the fact that we don't operate the way that some folks might fear that we operate. There isn't a lot of utility with that particular agreement. And I would even go so far as to say that, based on the date of execution of that agreement, 2007, that the discussion that we're having here really isn't about that agreement. The agreement itself is a bit of a red herring. It's a symbol. And I would say, you could say, well, symbols are important and then we should do away with that symbol. And indeed, you could. I would offer to you, however, that symbols are indeed important and they're important to other folks, too. We have, as Mr. Garcia alluded, a significant degree of partnership with federal agencies, with US Marshals, with ATF, with DEA, with Treasury, with Secret Service, that operate in Glendale and in some cases FBI, other folks, in and around our station. To take the provocative step of saying, we don't want this particular operation, we don't want this symbol of our collaboration any longer, I think has potential for unintended consequences that you certainly, as elected officials, don't want, I don't think anyone in the community wants, certainly we, as administrators, do not want. As I say, we derive a tremendous amount of value from the inter-agency operation, the regional task forces that we are a part of, and yes, ICE is a part of those task forces. And to the extent that very good police work is being done, to the extent that we are able to leverage the relationships that we have to the benefit of this community, telling folks for no other reason other than politics to pick up and leave, I think ends up coming back to get you later on when you're asking for assistance. And not that ICE or ATF or DEA or anybody else, FBI or anyone else, is going to say, we're gonna take our toys and go home. Bureaucracies generally aren't gonna work that way. The way it will work, most likely, is that when we call for that assistance, people are busy. Resources are redirected in other parts of the county or other parts of the state or other parts of the region. And the level of assistance that we get, well, that isn't necessarily the level of assistance we're going to get in the future. Now, is that definitive? Maybe not. Maybe not. But to the extent that this agreement does not animate a level of activity that is objectionable based on what it is that we're talking about, and you always hear the horror story of somebody being snatched up off the street and being deported, that's not the way Glendale operates. If ICE were to operate like that, they're gonna operate like that regardless of this particular agreement. What is at play, thus, the only thing that you stand to lose is the potential for that inter-agency collabor- inter-agency collaboration when it does directly impact our community. And I don't know that certainly the police department, nor I, and you can all speak for yourselves, do we want that culpability on your hands, on my hands, on the chief's hands. I can tell you from the chief and speaking with him before he left for a family vacation that's been scheduled for a long time yesterday, and certainly Deputy Chief Povolitis will give you the same information. The risk and return, in terms of the political dynamic for the operational effectiveness, that equation, just in our view, does not make a lot of sense. That trade-off is not equitable. So we would submit to you that we have this existing agreement predating the Trump administration. It hasn't been a source of contention in the past, and I don't think it'll be a source of contention in the future. I would only, I would close my comments in echoing what Mr. Garcia had stated, that the values of the, that the chief has put forth, the values of the organization, and indeed, what you've asked is, bring those values to the city council so that we can endorse, presumably endorse, those values on behalf of the entire city, not just the department, but the entire organization. Bring that to us so we can do that. Those values predate January 20th of 2017, as does this agreement, as does the decades-long relationships that we've built into the community. The federal statute that Mr. Garcia referred to, 1373, has been in place for 21 years. It predates the Trump administration. So many things predate the Trump administration, although he might not tell you that. But they predate the Trump administration. Indeed, the only thing that has changed in all of this calculus is that administration and the caustic manner in which they behave. I would ask, as we try to operate this police department, that we keep that in mind, that whoever that temporary occupant of the Oval Office is, doesn't dictate, doesn't get to dictate the way that we interact with our community, because it hasn't been that way before, and it will not be that way going forward.
I think, since things have changed in January 2007, I think the fear is that those powers that were not abused in the past, for example, our agreement with them, with ICE, may be abused in the future. So what then? What if they do start using our detention center as a processing point for people they want to deport?
If they did, at that time, then we can make a determination at that time based on fact, so that we aren't taking that unnecessarily provocative step in denying ourselves the opportunity to collaborate in areas that it does make sense. From high-intensity drug trafficking task force, LA Impact AB 109 Task Force, the Eurasian Organized Crime Task Force, all the efforts that we do, of which they are a part, you run the risk of alienating not just a key partner, but an array of key partners, for the sake of over-lawyering a set of values that everyone, I think, and certainly hopefully this dais, and hopefully in the chambers, agrees to. Because all of the emails I received applauded the fact that the department put this forward. They only wanted to go a little bit further. Okay? You know, you can say, well, why not go a little bit further? I guess I would ask, why does it have to go a little bit further if, in fact, for the last 20 years before there was a Trump administration, we've been doing it the way that folks would hope that we would? And now to say, well, that's not good enough, we're going to go just a little bit more because there's this outside third party that is impacting the way that Glendale is Glendale, I think that is a dangerous recipe as your manager.
I understand, but, I mean, lives may be ruined before we have an opportunity to react. I think that's the concern.
And I would submit to you that, if those lives were to be ruined by ICE acting in this cavalier manner, they're going to act in that cavalier manner regardless, regardless of whether or not the agreement that we have with them is in effect or not.
Is this agreement, is it secret? Can it be released to the public to see what?
I would defer to City Attorney. It's an agreement that was made by and among, I believe it was signed by the former city manager, and approved as its a form by either City Attorney and/or Police Department.
I actually have, community members have requested to see the agreement. Is there a problem with that?
As far as I know now, there might be certain provisions of it that might need to be redacted, I'm not sure. But we'll follow up with my office, and we can certainly make it publicly available. If, you know, if there's no need to redact any portion of it.
I think that's a good idea. I think we should do that.
I'm going to, I'm going to go to the cards. If that's okay? We have seven speakers, three minutes each. Mike Gomez. I ask that, I know we have seven speakers, let's try to not be redundant and come to the point. And if you don't need three minutes, that would be good, too.
I don't need three minutes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. My name is Mike Gomez, and I want to thank the city council for putting this subject on tonight's agenda. I cannot emphasize the importance and so timely an issue as this resolution presents, and one which the council needs to approve, but not in its present form. I am asking the council to come forward with a much more precise, stronger, and specific revised resolution. Never in our nation's history have we been so tested as we are today with this new administration that challenges us to confront feelings of hopelessness and despair. It will test our resolve to deal with the issues of peace and war, and maybe more. I also want to emphasize to the council and Chief Castro that currently we have an actual contract, an agreement with ICE, for detention cell at our police department. We, the community, are asking the city to rescind that contract for the safety and peace of mind of our community. Since the first pilgrims, America has been a nation of immigrants and cannot go back after so many centuries of hard-won victories. City council, I only ask that the United States of America remain a beacon of hope and prosperity for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Matella, followed by Julia Figuera.
Just to Mr. Sananian's question, we have made that document available, unredacted. So if anybody wants it, we can certainly make it available.
So if they, let's say Mr. Gomez wants a copy?
Absolutely. Anybody wants a request, you let me know, and we'll get it to them.
Will we post it online, or?
Sure, we can. We can, yeah.
Okay. Please, let's do it.
Thank you. Jenny, please state your name.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff here tonight. My name is Jenny Matella. Thank you for this opportunity. I've been a proud resident of the city of Glendale for more than 15 years. I live and work here in Glendale. I've been an active member of Holy Family Catholic Community Church. I've been teaching Sunday School there for the past 10 years, and have been involved in several ministries in the past, and currently the president of the Justice and Peace Committee here in Glendale. But of all the introduction and description, tonight I identify myself, first and foremost, an immigrant. I'm originally from the Philippines. My parents and siblings moved here when I was 15, along with my mom's two sisters and daughter. I have two brothers and one sister. I attended Herbert Hoover High School and Glendale Community College. Both my brothers and sisters all attended Glendale schools. I remember when we first moved, it was a huge adjustment for me and my entire family. We had to learn and acquaint ourselves with the culture of America. But fortunately, we moved in a city that shines in its diversity. That really is one of the main things I love about Glendale. We have families from Middle East, Asia, Mexico, Latin Americas, and it's beautiful. Glendale thrives in its diversity. We're all from different religious backgrounds and different ethnicities, yet we manage to make it work and get along well and watch out for one another. In all my years of Glendale, I have never felt unsafe. I never had to worry about being bullied or be subject to prejudice or racism. I never had to worry about people or other races judging me and looking at me differently, never, until now. The day after President Trump was elected, I was seeing post after post in Facebook about people being harassed because they look a certain way. I always take everything I see on social media with a grain of salt. But that evening was a night I won't forget. I live and drive and work on Brandon Milford, and I was walking on my way home on November 9th, the day after the election. I was waiting by the light past the freeway on Good Avenue to cross the street when a car passed by me, and out of nowhere, this gentleman screams, "Go back to Mexico." I was taken aback and looked around me, wondering if there was anyone else around me. There was no one. It was just me. The remark was intended for me. I was in shock. I was offended, not because someone thought I was Mexican, but that someone had the guts to say that to me openly in public. Based on what? My skin color? Regardless of your political affiliation, we cannot deny the fact that because we have a leader who speaks his mind without thoroughly thinking of the implications of his words, we have given power and almost the authority to categorize people based on their religion, their skin color, and the language they speak. And this scares me. But what scares me even more is the fact that some refuse to acknowledge the issue. We turn a blind eye and we truly become desensitized to these things that are negatively impacting our community. I was not afraid before. I was not worried. But now I am. There's fear that is starting to seep into the community. I have friends and families who are undocumented, who constantly worry about their day-to-day lives, who refuses to see doctor when they're sick in fear of being asked of information. I know, I know a lot who are currently benefiting from DACA, who no longer feel secured with their jobs, who are constantly worried about being asked randomly for documentation at work. I know several people who go to church who refuses to register and give their names in fear of what might happen to that information. I know hard-working mothers and fathers, good people who live and work here in Glendale, are the bribes who stresses about the fate of their children if they're ever taken away. This is not fiction. This is the current reality of several families living here in Glendale, and being actively involved in church has allowed me to work with several nonprofit organizations and meet and relate with families. The Justice and Peace Committee had worked with the Archdiocese of LA and sponsored several immigration workshops and seminar, and we get a good amount of people express their concerns, and we assist them with their inquiries and inform them of their rights. I've seen firsthand what this fear does to people, to families. Fear is a very powerful thing, but you know what else is powerful? Love. Love of neighbor. We are all brothers and sisters, are we not? So I sincerely believe that it is imperative for the city to adopt a resolution that would diminish the fear of uncertainty that several residents of Glendale share. No decisions should ever be made without asking ourselves first, is this for the common good? Thank you.
We hope to do just that tonight. Julia McDonough.
Good evening. My name is Julia Figuera McDonough. I'm a resident for about three years now of Glendale. I'd like to thank the mayor, the council members, the police department, and the city attorney for recognizing the importance of this issue and taking the time to engage with community members about it. I've lived in many places across the country, and I can honestly say that I've never before encountered such a professional and proactive police department. I sincerely believe that we have a head start in addressing this issue because the police department has worked hard to build a relationship of trust with the city's residents. From both a personal and professional perspective, I know how important that trust is. My mother is an immigrant from one part of the world, my husband is an immigrant from another, I was born a U.S. citizen in yet another. We are part of a large, extended, mixed-status family. I have worked in law enforcement for over 10 years. Every day, I see the fear and trepidation that keeps honest, hard-working people from reporting crimes. And I see how they are often doubly victimized by bad actors who exploit that fear. Knowing an abused woman would rather hide her bruises than risk being deported and leaving her U.S. children behind. A teenager who witnesses gang violence would rather keep quiet than expose his parent's status. Or a worker who toils in a sweatshop would rather go without pay and endure sexual assault on the factory floor than risk an ICE raid. This fear and the resulting expectation is real. It happens every single day, and it is getting worse. It has gotten worse since the election. With all due respect, it is not redundant to specifically and clearly address those fears in the city's policy. I understand the concern with losing federal funding is also very real, especially in light of the language used in the president's executive order and the recent announcements by the attorney general. There are just a few quick points I'd like to make about that. Although I'm in no position, of course, to offer legal advice to council or the police department, I'd strongly urge you to take a closer look at 8 U.S.C. 1373, which by its terms only restricts the city's ability to prohibit the sharing of immigration status information. Nothing in those provisions, as the city attorney noted, touches on immigration status information except for Point 6, which also does not touch on immigration status information. And we can talk about this, I think, in more detail if we're given an opportunity to flesh out a more detailed policy. Second, although it may seem that a more general statement regarding the police department's enforcement priorities will call less attention and run less risk of Glendale being labeled a sanctuary city, something that no one here is advocating for, I'm not sure that that is a safe assumption. Stating that the department will not incarcerate or detain individuals solely based on immigration status runs contrary to the clear intent of the current administration. They want you to do exactly that. We have more to gain than to lose by being more specific about our policies. Third, despite the administration's bravado, there are legal limits, both statutory and constitutional, to what the president can do unilaterally, and checks and balances to make sure those limits are enforced. So far, the courts have done their job in this regard. As noted by the police federal council in the memo to the council, in California, Santa Clara County, San Francisco, and Richmond have already filed suit to enjoin the federal government's attempt to condition federal funding on local governments consenting to being conscripted to enforce immigration law. If I may have permission, just to read a quick quote to the council from the federal judge in Miami-Dade County who overturned the mayor's decision to revive a detention policy in their local jails for ICE. "No doubt the limitations imposed by the Tenth Amendment, like so many limitations imposed by the Constitution, are a source of frustration to those who dream of wielding unprecedented, a power in unprecedented ways to unprecedented degrees. But America was not made for those who dream of power. America was made for those with the power to dream. Of course, we must protect our country from the problems associated with unregulated immigration. We must protect our country from a great many things, but from nothing so much as from the loss of our historic rights and liberties. We all look forward to working with you to engage the community, to create a clear, meaningful resolution that protects all residents of Glendale." Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, please. Elizabeth Batanza, followed by Kate Everly.
Hi, Mayor Devine, Mr. Sananian. I wanted to thank you two for leading the charge on this. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to reiterate what everyone else has said, that we demand clear language, but also outreach to the communities who are affected by this. It's fine to talk about this in these chambers, but clearly, these vulnerable communities are not getting the message. So no matter what the resolution looks like, and I think we want it to be clearer than the paragraph that's there right now, I would like to know what the city plans to do to publicize it to those vulnerable communities. Glendale Unified School District, as you know, adopted a Safe Zone Resolution that they revised and was very clear, and they're training all faculty and staff on how to implement and comply with this resolution to have safe zones for students. It's no good, though, to have safe zones for students and families if they're fearful driving to and from school that their child, or that they will be separated from their children. And with all due respect to Mr. Ochoa, while we might not be earning a lot of money as a city from that ICE contract, every, it's not about the money, exactly. So every dollar, you know, that represents a human being who was detained. So I just want to go on record, as a resident of Glendale, that once that trust is eroded, it's going to be very hard to get back. And I'm not going to feel safer knowing that that trust has been eroded between the residents and the police department and the city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kate Everly, let's not applaud after, let's move along. Kate Everly, followed by Daniel Bratman.
Actually, I don't need to speak. I just have to end.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Then we'll have Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, and council members, staff. I had a lot prepared, but I'm going to actually scrap it because I don't want to be redundant. But, yeah, to kind of emphasize what Elizabeth just said, you know, we were here, I don't know, three or four weeks ago and spoke to you about, you know, doing something like this, and I really appreciate that you've taken this action and moved forward with it. But, Mr. Ochoa, at that council meeting, you read off the statement of the police chief, and so I went home and I tried to find it, and it was nowhere to be found. It was not on the city website. And I looked around, eventually I contacted the police department, and Tony Lightfoot was kind enough to send me a clip from the LA Times. And I said, well, have we published it? She says, no, we just communicated it to the LA Times. So it went out once, it was not put out on social media, nothing else. So I think that's just an example of perhaps kind of an excess timidity. I think that, and I know that now you're taking a step that's very different from that, and I appreciate that. So I think, though, that also, you know- So I think, though, that also, you know, with all due respect, Mr. Ochoa, to what you said, I think, you know, yes, things, I know we've been doing all the right things all these years, but the world has changed around us, and I really do think it is a matter of optics, and it's a matter of really getting out there, being very clear, unambiguous, and, you know, screaming out to the community that we have your back. You don't need to be afraid to send your children to school. You don't, you know, if you get pulled over because you have a missing taillight, you know, you're going to get a citation, but don't floor it and drive away because you're afraid you're going to get, you know, sent back to Mexico or somewhere, you know? We don't want that kind of sentiment in the community. So it's not just a matter of us doing the right thing, it's also very important that we speak very loudly so that the communicate, the community hears that we're there and we're behind them. Okay? That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you. Violet Sakra.
My name is Violet Sakra. I'm a resident of Glendale for the past 10 years. I have two statements to make on 8A and 8B. May I do them both at the same time?
8A and 8B? Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. Could you do that, or should I just?
Sure. I'll interrelate them. Thank you. I just want, I just wanted to say I support the ACLU's guidelines to add clear provisions and legal clarity to the Glendale resolution so that the city could take a firmer stand against reporting undocumented residents to ICE while not violating federal law. As a city, Glendale needs to remain a safe place, a freedom city for immigrants. We do not want a culture of fear in our immigrant community, which leads to less collaboration between the undocumented and the police, which has been proven, and of endangering the safety of the community as a whole. We cannot afford acts of domestic violence in these communities to go unreported, or kids not to attend school for fear of deportation. I urge you to be more public about Glendale's position, have a more clear language in the resolution, and urge you to end the contract between the Glendale City Jail and ICE. Furthermore, I'd like to comment on 8B. I appreciate and highly support the very clear Glendale resolution that you, Mayor Devine, proposed to oppose the discrimination against LGBT community. This is very proactive, clear, and shows a real commitment to promoting diversity and equality of all residents in our community. Finally, in light of rising acts of hate towards Muslims nationwide, and I've also heard of instances in our own community recently, I was wondering if you have considered making a resolution which makes a clear stand against acts of hate and discrimination against the Glendale Muslim community? I ask you this as a wife of a Muslim Indian raising a mixed-religion and ethnic child in Glendale.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. That, that, one more card? One more card. Mona Montgomery.
Hello, councilpeople. My name is Mona Montgomery. Well, why would we not want to support the federal government's immigration laws? We are so lucky to have a president today who is actually taking an interest in our country's sovereignty. Do you really want the United States not to have borders, which is basically what we have now? Do you really want to encourage mass immigration without any thought to screening people, especially regarding diseases? Of course, I'm a much older lady than any of you, but I remember when our borders were respected. We didn't have a problem because people didn't crash our borders. They respected our borders. And our Statue of Liberty had real class and dignity. She was a great lady, a wonderful, wonderful lady who extended her hand graciously to people who could benefit from coming into our country. That does not mean that we expected her to be gang-banged at the rate of a million illegal entrants every year, which is what's happening now. The Statue of Liberty is being gang raped. One million illegal entrants a year are taking advantage of this great lady, and nobody seems to care. Nobody defends her honor, nobody defends her dignity. Everybody just says, why should we defend our borders? Why should we have borders? Why don't we just become a wonderful world order where there's no difference between countries? When I was young and I traveled in Europe, I had to be searched by armed guards every time I went into another country. And I didn't object, I understood. A country has a right to decide whether or not they want someone to come in. It's just like your house. Are you going to open up your doors to prove how loving and kind you are and have no respect for the fact that somebody might come in from off the street and rape your daughter because you're such a good, tolerant person? We have to stop tolerating the intolerable. And luckily for us, we have a man in office right now who understands that and is ready to put an end to this ravishment of our country. I know that my opinion is in the minority, but it's very well-grounded in history. You will never find a country that survives without borders. Thank you.
That concludes my cards on the subject. I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Povolitis, I have a list of, I, like my fellow council members, was taking notes, and I just would like for you to address a couple of things that were said, if you all don't mind, and then you can chime in. One, Jenny's proclamation that, you know, that fear is now taking over, she's feeling unsafe in our community, and what is your reaction to that? Someone else said that the administration wants you to go out and incarcerate everyone, and are you going to be doing that? Trust in the community, that we will lose the trust in our community. Outreach, I think, I think we can discuss that later because I think that's very important, and that was a very good suggestion, a very good idea, that people in our community, everyone has to know about what we're doing here. And the last one, I don't think I can read my right, oh, the one, someone said that they didn't want there, anybody to get pulled over and thrown into the detention center service jail. And just your comments about these sorts of feelings in our community and how the police sees this type of enforcement.
I might get them backwards, and let me hope that I catch all of the, all of the points.
Respond to some of the remarks that we just heard.
Carl Povolitis, deputy police chief. Let me start with maybe just sort of a preamble is, I've been with this police department for two and a half decades, and this police department is well-rooted in the concepts and the tenets of community policing and prides itself on having and building and maintaining strong relationships with the community. And so just to be clear, because I understand that at least there are people who are fearful, and there have people, and there have been people who have been fearful of law enforcement for a long time, we are not the enforcers of immigration law. We provide service to our community, wherever people are, whoever's in need, and we don't ask questions. We do not ask drivers what their immigration status is, we do not go to domestic violence calls or disturbance calls and inquire as to anything related to immigration status. That is not our, that is not our function in the community. And we have taken great pains to maintain relationships with the community to build that, that level of, that level of trust. So I think when I look at the statement that Chief Castro put out, it is really an expression of Glendale Police Department's values. Those are the values that have existed for my tenure here, they are the values of the department there, they are the guiding principles for this, for the department on a go-forward basis. Despite all the change and the rhetoric, we have not changed our approach to policing in this community, and we have not been asked to change our approach to policing in this community. And so we will continue to do exactly what we are doing, we will continue to engage with our residents, whoever they are, wherever they are, we will continue to help those people that are in need and require our service. No questions asked. Did I miss any?
Well, I.
I would only add to that one point where you asked about publicity. The chief's policy was, and let's not forget the fact that we're here because our police chief had proactively, in the wake of the pronouncement from, edict from the Oval Office, that he expected, they expected departments to behave a certain way, that in fact, here's how Glendale would operate. And as Deputy Chief Povolitis indicates, it's a values-based statement, talks about meeting people where they are, providing that level of service. That information went out to the departments, an internal communication. This is the expectation of all of our police and fire personnel. You, Madam Mayor, asked that, recognizing that that was inherently a good thing, that that should be formally espoused by the council, and that's why we are here now. If you were to move forward with the resolution that is before you, what Mr. Lorenz would do as your Director of Communications is put forth through all of the media outreach, social media, traditional media, et cetera, that would encapsulate and amplify your message as the policymaking body for this jurisdiction across all of your 13-line departments, all 1,584 employees, not just the police department. That element would be forthcoming, but we felt that it would be appropriate only to have that come forward from you. You are the policymaking body, the chief makes policy for the police department, you make policy for the community.
Any comment?
So I have a general question. I mean, and let's focus, I really want to focus in on the facility, the use of the facility. Can you tell us, and do you know exactly, how is our jail used, when it's used by ICE?
We basically have a contract with ICE that provides housing services for federal detainees.
So, does that mean, I mean, what does that mean? How, I mean, they arrest someone and they say, here, Glendale, hold on to this person until?
If they, if they require bed space, we provide that service to them for a fee.
For 48 hours? Is it for 48 hours?
No.
They're a federal, go ahead, chief, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're a, they're a federal agency, so it's based on their ability to detain under federal law. We have a contract that basically says, that allows us to house people on behalf of the federal government, and they remunerate us for that housing. We, that's independent of actions taken by Glendale Police Department.
They're detainee, and not necessarily a detainee that is on a hold on immigration alone. It could be by some transnational crime.
So let me just follow up with a couple of questions. So do you think that ICE conducts operations in Glendale because they can house them in our jail?
No.
They're going to conduct those operations anyway?
They don't conduct the operations independent of that.
If they didn't house them in our jail, do you have any idea where they would take them?
They would, and if I can back up, there's no guarantee that they will house them at our jail. They are, they are a federal entity, and to the extent that they have federal facilities, whether they are under contract or whether they're operated by the federal government, they can house them there. You know, the one that comes off the top of my head, and I won't say that I know for sure, but there's the Metropolitan Detention Center in downtown Los Angeles, and what other facilities that the federal government has, operating agreements are accessed too.
Do you think that our, that there's a suggestion that our failure to make these facilities available would in any way affect their operations in terms of pursuing a, I don't know what you would call them, a fugitive or a, someone that they're after in Glendale?
In my opinion, no. They're, the federal government will run its operations the way that they choose to run their operations.
So this is, this is my problem. I mean, I understand what it would mean for us to not permit the housing, but I'm also hearing on the other side, we have this whole list of federal agencies, Justice Department agencies, that we do cooperate with. I want the best for our residents, I don't care what their immigration status is, and I'm not sure that failing to make these facilities available is going to, is going to have any effect on what we're trying to do. I very much support the chief's statement, but I'm not sure what that would do if, aside from sticking a, sticking our finger in their eye, I mean, I'm getting the sense that that's what we're doing, that they would house those detainees in the next-door city or downtown or Terminal Island or wherever they do that, and it really wouldn't have a deterrent effect on their, on their operations?
I would concur that it's not going to have a deterrent effect on their operations. But as the city manager eloquently pointed out, over all this time, we have developed relationships with federal agencies, and we participate on numerous task forces. The, we are in the Los Angeles metropolitan area, crime knows no borders, you know, be they political subdivisions like Glendale, by city, by region. And so we actively participate on regional task forces to leverage the resources that we have in order to help keep this community safe. And that includes partnering with those numerous federal agencies, including the FBI, ATF, U.S. Marshal Service, all of them, because that helps us achieve the goals of community safety with the resources that we have. Those partnerships are very, very important, and as I said, this contract with ICE has been there since 2007. It predates any of the discussion that we're, that we're having today.
You know, and to, I just want to piggyback on those questions about the contract, the detention services. I heard a chief from Orange County, and she was saying that they don't want to get rid of their detention service because if someone is picked up by ICE, not for a crime, just stopped and somebody says, do you have, you know, what's your immigration status? And they bring them, they bring them to the Glendale jail. If we didn't have that service here, that person that lives in this city could be shipped somewhere very far away, away from family, away from friends, and that would kind of raise the fear factor in that person. So having this service here in our community for, if a situation like that ever arises, they would at least be close to family and friends. Then, of course, you get into the dynamic that, you know, if we don't, if we don't cooperate or collaborate with ICE, then, you know, we have, we're jeopardizing your ability to use federal services, like you mentioned. Is that true about the, you know, them being close to home and being, as opposed to being...
I mean, if they do have contracts with people in the local, with the local area, it does allow people to stay local to their community as opposed to being shipped to a different facility. And so it does have that advantage.
Councilwoman Sinonian, Garpetian, who wants to go first?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, can you tell us how many cases did we have in the last five to 10 years that ICE used our facilities? And the people who were housed in our, in our detention facility, were there just immigration status issues or it was criminal issues?
I have not looked up the numbers onto the specifics, as you can see from the revenue in the staff report from last year. It's used, you know, a minimal, at a minimal, a minimal level through that time. And as I said, if they're, if they're being detained by the federal government, then under this agreement, they can, they can be housed there, and it can be a combination.
And has there been cases that because of the inner-agency collaboration, you were able to find criminals who committed crime in Glendale and flee to another country, arrest them, and bring them back to justice?
As I said, we're not exempt from the impacts of transnational crime, and the cooperation with our federal partners has helped us do exactly that, either locate somebody outside the United States or locate somebody coming back into, into our community.
Okay. Thank you, Madam.
Councilmember Sinonian?
No questions, no comments.
No questions, comments? Okay, well, okay.
One last question. Chief, when they're detained, do we permit them visitation by council?
Yes, they're entitled to all the, all the, all the rights that anybody's entitled to.
Okay, I have three questions for you, and if you've already answered these, I'm sorry if you'll answer them again for me. If we incorporate these ACLU provisions, number one, will it make Glendale a sanctuary city in violation of federal law? No, correct?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am, okay. Will it impede in any way, will it impede in any way our police department from carrying out the enforcement and the investigation of criminal activities and obtaining help from our federal government?
It will, it will not directly impact that, but I'm going to go back to, Chief Castro has issued a statement that really reflects the values of Glendale Police Department, the way we have conducted business, and the way that we intend to continue to conduct business. And keeping it relative, because it's a value-based statement and not to get, if you will, mired in the weeds. in the weeds, the men and women of the Glendale Police Department understand how we do this. It's incorporated not only in that statement, but in our policy, and that really provides us, I think, the best direction on how we move forward.
And finally, would it jeopardize our ability to receive federal funding? Could it, would it?
I will defer to the city attorney for a final answer, but that is always, that is a potential.
Could it, would it, for, let's say, you know, Section 8 housing, any of those police department grants that we get for equipment and...
Depends on the nature of the funding, you know, for example, you mentioned Section 8, on funding programs that are wholly unrelated to immigration or law enforcement, I would say the answer is no, simply because the law seems to be set, and I think that whatever conditions are being posed on a grant or a source of funding have to be related to that grant. So we couldn't, you couldn't put a condition on Section 8 or CBG that is related to something totally different.
But that could mean nothing to our president, right?
Well, certainly, but I'm just telling you legally, the law is, actually, thanks to Affordable Care Act law, and that issue is sort of, that particular issue has sort of been litigated further. With respect to a grant that's related to law enforcement, if it's an existing program, the cases seem to suggest you can't impose a new condition on an existing program. If the federal government were to create a new program to incentivize agencies to participate by using federal dollars to get local agencies to get into the federal immigration business, for lack of a better term, those probably would be upheld, but the existing programs that are currently part of the Justice Department program, I mean, it's an open question, but, you know, I would view it as no, because it has to be, the condition has to be related to something, has to be in the same scope and in the same arena as the original purpose behind the funding source, if that makes sense.
The $45 million a year that we have through federal subventions for everything from CDBG to HUD to, I think it's 1.3 or 1.4, coming to public safety, as the city attorney indicates, likely are not at stake, because even the public safety dollars predate this particular action. So, once again, the issue here really isn't about the dollars, you're not putting a dollar on a life or a dollar on somebody's rights. This is about the way that the department operates and has operated. We stop you and tell you that you're speeding, we don't ask you, where were you born? And I appreciate the sentiments that folks have made, most definitely, because they're leading with their heart, and I am extremely sympathetic, not just empathetic, but sympathetic to that. And I'm sure all of you, maybe a couple of you in particular, as immigrants yourselves, can be very sympathetic to those points. But I think one of the speakers had used a key term that encapsulates an element of caution for us as your staff, optics. Are we looking to change the way that we operate and have operated for the sake of those optics? And again, I'm not saying optics aren't necessarily important, but there is a priority, and there's a competition among those priorities for what is most important to this council and to this community ultimately. Folks are feeling the sting. I heard a lot of comments from folks about how they feel based on what the President of the United States has said, and it's what they perceive from the environment around them. Not necessarily, or not at all, that the Glendale Police Department made them feel that way, or any city department made them feel that way, or you as council members made them feel that way. It's about that perception, and so I would submit to you that, to some degree, we're shadowboxing a bit with how people might feel and the degree of discomfort or insecurity, lack of security that they feel, based on these comments, pronouncements from the Oval Office. We've been here in many ways before, maybe not to the extent that you had the person that's supposed to be the President of the United States saying these things, but it was only a quarter of a century ago that Prop 187 was approved by California voters. And that was the papers please, the papers first please proposition. And being in government at that time, being called wetback, being called boy, being called anchor baby, as an employee of a local city, was no kind of fun. And the people that did that, the people that would speak to that degree of vulgarity, were going to be vulgar no matter what, and they were going to be hateful no matter what. I think your charge, certainly what we would recommend to you, is not to lose your sense of, certainly not your humanity, but not your professional objectivity in how you set policy for this organization, and I would submit to you that they are not mutually exclusive.
Councilmember Sinanian?
Comment?
Comment.
Okay, so, yeah, this is a very important subject matter, because we are a nation of immigrants, and we have two on this dais, and I'm sure we have many in the room. And yes, we've had the Statue of Liberty for a while, but during the existence of that statue, we had segregation, we had detention camps for Japanese-Americans, we turned away Jewish refugees from the Holocaust, we've done some pretty nasty things in that time period. So to say that somehow things were great, and now we're ruining the country by allowing immigrants into this country, or tolerating illegal immigrants in this country is just not the case, I'm sorry. And right now, really, aren't we dealing with the issue of whether Glendale should be involved with any immigration enforcement? So what happens on the borders of Ellis Island is what happens there. We're a city here, we have residents, they have different statuses, it doesn't matter to us. They're all our residents, we care for them equally, and we're not in the business of enforcing immigration status, and we should not get into that. When Madam Jenny was talking and telling her story about when she got yelled at, I tell you, it happens surprisingly often in Glendale. Just two days ago, I received an email in response to a mass email that was done, and it reads as follows: Stop sending me emails, I'm tired of you moes taking over Glendale, go back to Armenia and run for office there. They do this to a council member. Imagine what they'd do to someone who doesn't, is not in elected office. So it happens. It's not a healthy environment, and we should do nothing to promote this unhealthy environment. Now, I understand the city's concerns, I understand the police's concern, I'm very sensitive to the issue of what punitive actions the federal government may take against us, but maybe we're rushing into this, and maybe it seems like we're moving forward with the resolution for the sake of doing the resolution as opposed to passing the resolution that is going to make our residents feel comfortable. And maybe we go through a public process and we end up at the same point, the same paragraph that the police chief has drafted, but we would have gone through a process. Folks will have seen the copy of the ICE agreement that there's out there, we will have had the chance to hear them out and come to, you know, mutually understandable resolution. Those are my thoughts. If we're doing this just for the sake of saying, we passed a resolution, but the people who are asking, people who need the resolution the most aren't, don't feel any more protected as a result, I don't know if we're wasting time.
Thank you. Mr. Najari, Mr. Garpettian, councilmembers?
Well, clearly, and this is an ongoing discussion that not just our city, but our entire country is having, and it's not an easy discussion for many, and it's wrapped up in so many issues of human rights, immigrant rights, citizens' rights, family rights. So it is a long discussion. We could have, you know, this could be an ongoing series that we have, but I'm proud of Chief Castro's statement of policy, and not just the chief, but the entire police department. I think it's, it does so much, I mean, it is a, who would have, first of all, who would have thought that this would have been the policy of the city of Glendale 20 years ago? They would have said, no way, this isn't Glendale, where we would oftentimes run people out of town, not based on their immigration status, but on the color of their skin. And that's not 20 years ago, that's perhaps a bit further back, a bit further back, I'm sorry. But I am proud of the chief's statement of policy, and I do want to affirm it, but in no means is it closing the door for a further discussion on what we can do for our citizens and our residents, and if that involves, I know there was a discussion with Ms. Eberle, and I know Tom Lorenz got involved, about putting links on our webpage to immigration agencies, to attorneys, to all sorts of resources that can be available both before or after an interlude with law enforcement, whether it's police, ICE, or any sort of other federal agency. I think we owe that to our agents, we owe that to our residents to do that, so I don't know if that needs any council motion, that's perhaps in the city manager's discretion, but to put as many resources out there as possible, put the ICE agreement on the website, again, reiterate, and make the chief's statement, which I'm proud of, as widely disseminated as possible, and let's go from there. This isn't a static discussion, it's a discussion that's going to continue, and if things change, situations change, if there is perhaps an egregious event in the city that maybe we need to pick it up again and fine-tune our position, and rethink our position, to either become more strict or more clear on the points that were raised. So that's my position.
Garpettian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very sensitive issue, it's a very important issue. I traveled the world when I was young, backpacked Europe when I was very young, and I've seen it all and I heard it all. My father used to tell me, wherever you go, the sky is the same color, arrogant people, ignorant people, racist people, wherever you go, you find them, but they're in a minority. So I think what I learned is just make decisions based on facts, not fear. Be proactive, not reactive. We are reacting to a situation at this time. I'm very proud of chief's statements as well, I agree with my colleagues. And I think when we say, put your trust in this dais, in this council, people that you elected, we really mean it, because if you look at the diversity in our ethnicity, race, religion, you see that Glendale is a very diverse city. You look at our management, you look at our police chief, our fire chief, the diversity is there, and trust me when we tell you, trust us when we tell you, that we are going to do the right thing. But I don't think we need to be very reactive and make a decision based on fear. So if the time comes and there is a needing change, we can make changes right away. I agree with my colleagues, I think I will support the resolution if we want to support that tonight or bring it back in the near future, I'm okay with that as well. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Okay, I'll wrap this up with, we are a city of diversity. We have over 50% of our community immigrants. My grandparents were immigrants, they came from Europe, so, and I remember my grandmother learning the history of the United States so that she could take her citizenship test. So I understand coming to another country and perhaps being harassed, or, and like Councilmember Sinanian, I was just at the Pacific Edison for a celebration of Cesar Chavez Day, and a young man came up to me and he said, I have to tell you what someone just said to me. And I said, what was that? And he said, he came right up, he was Hispanic, and he said, woman came up to me and said, all of you immigrants should go home. And I said, you know, I am really sorry about that, but, you know, we have a First Amendment, and there really isn't any way I can stop her. You know, I could go over to her and say, it's rude, but what good would that do? I agree that we need to have a policy here in Glendale that allows our residents to, enables our residents to feel safe. And I think that, my feeling is that our police department is trusted, people rely on them, albeit they love them, they know them. And so I feel that I am, I would, am willing to affirm the chief's statement tonight. I think the outreach is absolutely necessary, I think we have to let all, as many of the immigrants, in however different ways we can, let them know that they are safe here, that our police department is not going to hunt them down. We are not going to be helping anyone, any enforcement organization find them. We will be there to help them, and if they are taken into custody and put in our jail, they will still be close to their families and close to their friends, and I think, if you look at it like that, it's a good thing. So I think the bottom line here is that the police department, this city council, we all want all of our residents to be safe. That's the main goal, for everyone to be safe and to feel safe. And so I'm ready to approve this resolution tonight. I think, I trust that our police department and the values that they've talked about tonight, that they are going to maintain those values, they are going to protect everyone in this city to the best of their ability. And so I would vote, ask for a motion for the resolution, to approve the resolution and the...
So, may I, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So I want to understand what Councilmember Garpettian's position is, because if he's supporting my position that we work with the community and come back with, I'm not saying this really has to be different, but I'm saying we have to work with the community, make sure that everyone has the buy-in into this. If Councilman Garpettian is supporting me on that, then there may be two motions on the table. Oh, and remind people of another thing, just in two weeks, there'll be a new council, maybe an entirely new council, who knows? So what we pass with four people may not be that relevant to the next five people that are up here in two weeks. There's that, too. Yeah, this motion was brought forward by our mayor, and if this resolution is passed tonight, we can always amend it. If not, we can, if the consensus is not there, we can always postpone this and do the community outreach and come back with a different idea, but I don't have a problem approving this resolution tonight as well, and then do the community outreach, at least we have something on our books, do the community outreach and revise it or amend it in the near future. It's always going to be done. I'm okay with that.
Then is there a motion to accept?
In that case, I will support this resolution, because I can't vote against this resolution, but I still think, once there's a new council, to the extent any one of us is here or not here, we should work with our community and maybe have the new council vote in a resolution as well.
I mean, my point is, it's a dynamic process, that it is subject to change and subject to modification at any time, but at this point in time, I would support this. Next composition of council may determine to modify it or ask the chief...
Bring it back?
We're not modifying it, what we're doing is we're affirming the chief's statement. So as the chief develops his statement, I'm sure he does more than just go to the residents, he's going to law enforcement and other folks as well, but it's a process that's collaborative, and it's subject to change, as anything, especially a resolution, which isn't, doesn't have the force of an ordinance or any sort of action, it's just a...
Certainly not an ordinance, but it isn't...
Depending on the language used, but yeah, this would be basically a policy statement the way it's worded.
And to the extent this is, this is today, the policy of the Glendale Police Department, not to inquire about immigration status, not to do the work of immigration control enforcement, but rather to protect the community and focus on that job entirely. That's what we have today, and this is simply a question as to whether, well, with the direction to staff was to bring this back so that council could weigh in on that and presumably adopt that same stance as a policy statement and over the entire department, or the entire organization. Now, if you want to go beyond that, as Mr. Sinanian has indicated, once council is reorganized, certainly you can always bring matters... reorganized, certainly you can, you can always bring matters back. The discussion, the litigation on Sanctuary City and its definition may be decided sooner than not in, in the summertime, who knows? The state of California is moving forward with a sanctuary state law. That would have bearing on this particular matter. All these things, as you say, sir, are, place this in flux. At this point in time, this is the policy of, of the Glendale Police Department, and whether or not the council wants to say that is our policy too, and it's the policy for the entire organization, that's really the question tonight.
And I think the, the main goal for this evening was to, to approve and adopt a policy that the community can understand and we can reach out to them, explain it to them, so that we can calm the fears of the immigrants that we have in our community, so that they're not afraid to walk on the street. They know that they can do that and without fearing that one of our police officers is going to scoop them up. So with that, I'd like to ask again if there's a motion for this, a resolution, affirming the resolution.
And may I add, the benefits, the benefits that we did have, this discussion brought us a viewpoint that we had not known before by Ms. Eberly and the ACLU, that we know that that's the bar that they're, they're trying to reach. I don't know if there's a bar higher than the ACLU's bar. I don't think, I haven't heard if there is, but, but certainly that's the aspirations of some in the community.
Right.
And, and it, in that regard, it was a very beneficial week or, or two weeks of discussion of this with them.
Certainly was. It was great that they were engaged and, and brought this forward, so that we can all right...
So with the understanding, we could bring this back again and modify it as conditions in the community and the federal government change, I would move the item at 8A1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you for those, those of you that came tonight to express your ideas and opinions and very thoughtful, thank you. Next item, please.
8B is city manager regarding opposing discrimination against LGBT community, and B1 is a resolution of support.
Ms. Powers?
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of council. Christine Powers with the city manager's office. Earlier this year, Mayor Devine had signed her name to the Mayor's Against LGBT Discrimination Campaign, and this is a nationwide effort to protect LGBT Americans against discrimination. And based on feedback from mayor and city council, before you tonight is a resolution to declare council's intent against LGBT discrimination within the city of Glendale. This resolution is centered on the belief that all people should be treated fairly and equally by the laws of the state, and all people should have the opportunity to earn a living and provide for themselves and their families. We are very fortunate to live in California, which has some of the most progressive laws against LGBT discrimination. And just recently, last year, California became the first state that will introduce LGBT curriculum within the education, so that'll be coming down the pike in the next couple of years. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, thank you. You know, I brought this forward because of the, I don't know, the, the feelings that we've just been talking about tonight, the feelings of, of people being of hatred and antisemitism, and, and then of course, there's always discrimination against the LGBT community. And I, having signed this, this declaration, and thank you, Mr. Najarian, for bringing it forward as a resolution, I just feel that, that we need to become, and from what I've heard, we need to become a city which, which welcomes all people and accepts all people and are tolerant of all people in, in our community. So I'll take the cards, the speaker cards first, and then we can, we can discuss. So Violet Sacra, is she still here?
I think she spoke already.
Sacra.
Sacra, okay. Let's see, this is Seth Arisich, I'm sorry.
This is Seth Amisich. I was not really prepared to speak here tonight.
Oh.
But I'm going to.
All right.
I'm a Glendale resident of 25 years. I, in my youth, at Glendale High School, I was bullied, I was harassed, I was gay-bashed. I never, I was saved by a meter maid, which I am eternally grateful for. I never really got justice. And to this day, I still face homophobia and hate. It comes in many different forms. You never know when or where or how, but it does. And it wasn't until a couple of months ago, my, my 13-year-old niece came out to me, and it just made me really think about this whole new generation that are coming of age and don't have a voice. And I think that we, as a people, should take a stand for them and make the world a little bit better for them. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I, I think you should take heart in the fact that Ms. Powers, you just mentioned that the schools are going to be teaching, educating students about the LGBT community and, and what it's, what it's all about. So that's progress, I suppose. Mona Montgomery?
Good evening, council members. My name is Mona Montgomery. I'm just concerned that everybody is getting special rights except the white male. And when you get to that point, you got to give special preference to the white male as well. So I'm here asking for a little bit of concern for the white male. Because first, we started with black people. They were considered a discreet and insular minority, and that's why we gave them special protections 40 or 50 years ago. Then we extended it to the handicapped. They were also seen as a discreet and insular minority because they were shunned aside. And then we extended it to yet another minority group and another minority group. And what's happening now is that everybody's getting special rights except the white male. And so we're finding ourselves emasculated. The men are afraid to speak, they're afraid to express themselves because they're always getting bashed by everybody who says, well, you're the cause of all our problems. Sinanian here rightly said, oh, it wasn't such a great time when we had the Statue of Liberty, we had slavery in those days. This is the only country that ever put in...
Segregation.
Huh?
Segregation. Slavery was before the Statue of Liberty.
Segregation, segregation, right. Segregation, okay, another, another issue. Segregation, enforced segregation deprives people of the right to associate with the people they choose to associate with. Not a very important point from your point of view, because you think that everybody should be able, able to associate with everybody. But the First Amendment, I think it's in the First Amendment, gives us right to free associate. However, when you start striking these, these rights down, these First Amendment's rights down, you are striking at the very core of the Constitution, which is based on the idea of a person being allowed to be himself. I'm not suggesting that we burn homosexuals at the stake like it says in the Bible we're supposed to do, of course not.
That's good.
That's ridiculous.
Pardon me?
I'm glad.
Of course not. And, and the mere fact that you would think such evil of me and say, oh, I'm glad you don't, you know, I'm glad you don't want to burn homosexuals.
You just said it, but you said it.
What?
You, you said it.
No, but he's impressed. He is really impressed with me because, surprise, surprise, here's a woman who does not think that we should continue to give special rights to special groups of people, and so he's kind of surprised that I don't think that homosexuals should be burned at the stake. Obviously, that's ridiculous. But there comes a point where you have to stop granting special rights to, to groups of people. And one of the people, one of the groups of people that I think we should be protecting rights are, are the businessmen, who should have the right, under the burden of trying to start a business, they should have the right to hire anybody they want to, for any reason they want to. And nobody should be allowed to force themselves to own somebody who does not want their friendship. Thank you.
Berch Garpetian?
My last person, last person on, okay. Berch Garpetian, Glendale resident. I'm a white, straight man, and I'm pleased to hear that the city council is entertaining this resolution, because I think nobody needs to be having special treatment. However, everybody needs equal protection under the law, and everybody needs to be treated as an equal citizen of our country and resident of our city. So I encourage you to adopt this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Comments? Mr. Councilmember Sinanian, go ahead.
I think the fallacy in this whole thing is that somehow, someone assumes that someone's being granted extra rights or special rights. No, we're barely reaching the point of equal rights. We're, we're trying to get equal rights at this point. So I, anyway, I don't want to go that, in that direction. Equal rights. The representatives of the LGBT community are brothers, sisters, sons, family members. They deserve nothing less than equal rights with all of us, and no discrimination can ever be tolerated against them. I don't know what more needs to be said, said about this. I mean, it's axiomatic to me. So I support this wholeheartedly. I know that, Madam Mayor, you, I think you initiated this resolution, but if I can request your pardon and, and allow me to move the item when the time comes, I'd greatly appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And any other comments?
No, thank you for signing on, Madam Mayor, at the mayor's conference. And, you know, it's, you know, it partly goes with what Mr. Sinanian read from his email. There's a lot of, there's a lot of hatred out there, I hate to, I hate to say it. It's with the LGBT community, it's with ethnicities, it's with people of different nationalities and socioeconomic stratus. So we just need to, to cut it out and, you know, love, love one another, as they say. So...
Garpetian, anything?
Madam Mayor, I, you, you seldom find me being speechless, but tonight, after I heard, what I heard is, is just mind-boggling to me. And I support this wholeheartedly and, you know...
Thank you. I, I think the bottom line here is to, thank you, is to accept, accept, start accepting the diversity of our humanity. Just start accepting each other, tolerating each other, getting along with each other. We should not have to sign, we should not have to sign anything like this. This should go without saying, without signing, without any word. And it's very unfortunate that, that our society has come to this, and God forbid it should get any worse. So let's, those of us in this city, in this great city, let's promise each other that we will respect, tolerate, love each other, no matter who we are, or what we are, or what our religion is, our ethnicity, our, our sexual orientation, it just doesn't matter. We are all human beings and we're in this, I used to tell my students, we're all on this boat together, in this ship together, and let's just enjoy each other and while we're here. And so do I have a motion?
I so move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Proudly yes. Next item, please.
Item C is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Grayson Unit Number Nine Gas Turbine. C1 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing contract with General Electric Package Power Inc. in amount not to exceed $220,000 plus a 20% contingency of $44,000.
Madam Mayor, members of council, before the, Mr. Ochoa, Mr. Zern gets the staff report, we do have a, a participation issue that we have to address. Both Madam Mayor Devine and Councilmember Najarian own stock or have investment in, interest in General Electric, which is the subject of this particular contract. Normally, what that means is that both council members would have to recuse themselves, and by doing so, we would lose our quorum to, to hold the meeting and take action on this item. There is an exception in that FPPC rule that requires recusal in a situation, it's called rule necessity, in a situation where only the council is authorized to act, and that's the case here, only, only the council can approve this contract, where the council must take action, and, and I'm sure Mr. Zern will get to you, and the importance of taking action on this as soon as possible, given what our inspection found and what the report shows. And then in that regard, between the two council members who have the conflict, we'll have to engage in some sort of game, game of chance. I do have two straws, or actually two coffee stirs, the short straw and the long straw. And so for that purpose, whoever draws the short straw would participate in the meeting, sit in the meeting, so that there is a quorum for the council to participate and take action. But that council member would not participate in the discussion and would, would recuse for the voting. And the other council member would step out before this item is even discussed, and then, and then going forward, the other two council members, Councilmember Sinanian and Councilmember Garpetian can participate and deliberate on the matter and take action if they so choose.
Can this wait till the new council is reconstituted?
I'll leave that to Mr. Zern, but my understanding is no, just give, we, we won't have new council on board until May 2nd.
Right.
So, and, and we've already delayed this about a month, and we're really pushing to date where we really need to move forward on this. I don't know if Mr. Zern has any more comments on that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as, as Mr. Garcia indicated, I'm a little concerned we waited this long. If, if you were to say yes tonight, I think this unit would probably come back up right around the end of June, 1st of July. We were hoping to have it in sooner so we could, we could QA QC it before we got into the summer season. This is really our, our main workhorse unit, and it was a, a very big pickup on, on the part of our staff. I want to give them a tremendous amount of credit. You see the pictures on here, they put a scope down there and they saw an anomaly, a very small anomaly, that as you, if you read the, the reports, a little technical, but without picking that anomaly up, if it had gone further, if we'd have simply started that unit, it could have very easily thrown something off the turbine, it would have been a seven-figure repair. So kudos to them. And I would, would ask you, if at all possible, for us to fit, to approve this tonight so that we can, we can get these repairs done as soon as possible, right along the lines of what I was explaining earlier with Unit Three.
It's legal.
So with that, once Mr. Garpetian gets back, we'll...
I just want to state that I do take conflicts of interest seriously, and if it were not for the requirement to have a quorum, to make a determination on this power plant issue which provides, which will be needed to provide our residents with electricity, I would be out that door on the way home. And I'm, I'm sure the mayor shares my sentiments, and it's just in this unusual situation that this rule of necessity is being implemented, and I'm, I'm doing it only for the good of the people, of course.
And do you feel lucky?
You want to draw?
Yeah, I want to. So short one, short one stays.
And then the long one steps outside.
Oh, looks pretty long to me. Yeah, okay.
So I go, can I go in the back room?
Yeah. And then again, this discussion will be with Councilmembers Sinanian and Garpetian, and Ms. Devine is participating in the record, the ministry reflect that Ms., Mayor Devine is participating only for purposes of maintaining our quorum.
So at the end of the day, only the two of us are going to vote?
Correct.
So this could deadlock?
It could. And then we'll have one-on-one.
All this and, okay, all right.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, we're dispensing with competitive bidding, so let's start with that.
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sinanian, yes, in the formal, from a formal standpoint, we are, but we did take quotes from, from three different firms. Now, let me, let me say with that, with that, the other two firms that bid are bidding on the caveat that they get a discount voucher from General Electric in order to buy the parts, and that's not a given. So it, it becomes somewhat of a moot point because General Electric was the low bidder overall, or they had the lowest quote, I should say, overall. Very closed system. Those parts come from one place and one place only. They could facilitate the repair with the parts, but they need those parts in order to make the repair.
And again, the, the time, the time sensitivity is because we're trying to make sure we're ready for the summer?
That's absolutely right, yes.
And this is our peaker unit, number nine?
This is our peaker unit. This is really the, the backbone of our operation, not the plan.
And the General Electric's bid was the lowest?
Their quote was actually the lowest, if you see on page two.
Right, 220, 224.
Even, even with the other two firms making the assumption that they could get a, a discount voucher, they were still higher.
And this is the unit that we're, we're likely to keep, right?
Yes, yes. Under the repower proposal, this, this unit would stay.
Is there a chance, if we, that's a hypothetical question, if we, if we go with number two, is there a chance for them not to get the voucher?
Correct.
And this price would go?
And this price would go up?
Yes.
All roads lead back to GE, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on...
Do we have speakers?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to move the items?
Yeah, I move the item.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Senanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
It should be abstained.
Abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry, abstain.
Thank you.
And this is legal with two votes, it's okay?
Yeah, it's majority of the quorum.
Okay.
The best one ever, though, I've ever seen is to pick a number. But the city attorney forgot to write down the number ahead of time.
One to 10, one to 10, and then somebody says 11? Okay.
It happens occasionally.
Yes.
In the form of a question, please.
Okay, next item. Mr. Garcia.
Next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, is oral communications. Discussion is limited. Item's not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay, I have three cards. We'll start with Belinda Beesmeyer. Hi. Okay. No thanks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. After listening to all the profound and controversial statements, what I have to say is so superfluous, but I'm going to say it anyway, that, as you know, you have my name, Belinda Beesmeyer, 40-year resident of Glendale, and I just want you to know that, and I was disappointed last week that we didn't have the city council meeting because we didn't have a quorum because I would have said what I have to say then. And so I just want to say that, you know, my event has long passed, the 12th of March, my Glendale Youth Orchestra concert. And so I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Devine, and your husband, Mr. Senanian, and Mr. Garpetian, and your wife, Armina, head of the...
GWSB.
For being there. And so it was one of our best concerts, just so you know. And I've heard that from so many people. And so, you know, our next event is May 21st, and there's something else going on that day, and I'll be talking to you then, or right before then, anyway. But I just want to say thank you again for being there, and that this is so important, our youth, and just you seeing how well they perform in a professional manner. And I just wanted to do a little bit of an acknowledgement for the people who let me place my flyers, not very many, but still. It was Charles Music and Ernie's Barber Shop, and he does my hair, too, and Valzado in Glendale, and Technoland Computer Repair here in Glendale. So thank you very much, and so that's it.
Well, yeah. Miss Beesmeyer, you know, you've been coming for as long as I remember, and it was clear that you were advertising something very, you know, happy and bright and nice, but not until we went to the concert did I fully appreciate you and what it is that you do. And I'm so proud that when you weren't here, I took on the role of advertising the concert.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I was in Mammoth, I hate to tell you that.
It's, I mean, awesome. I mean, I can't describe it.
Thank you.
And the fact that it's children who are doing this, it's amazing. So thank you to you and the executive...
We do hope to see you again.
Yeah, executive board that came and met with us, that was very helpful. So thank you very much.
And we actually told every, we announced how wonderful the concert was, and we said, "Go to the next one if you have never been." So May 21st is the next one.
May 21st, 7 o'clock at the Ollis Theater and Park in the Orange Street Garage.
Yeah, put that on your calendars because this is fabulous. Thank you.
Don't go away, Miss Beesmeyer. It was me and my wife, and we also brought our little daughter.
Oh.
She's 10, and she sat until the end. Usually when they're bored, they say, "Can we go home now?" So she sat until the end, and I was very glad to see that one of my daughter's friends, Lizzie Karate, was part of the orchestra, and she used to play soccer. I mean, I had the privilege of coaching them, and it was great to see her over there as well. And these kids are amazing. It was a fabulous event, and I want to congratulate you on that as well.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Good night. Thank you. Okay, Paul Marmrestein.
Can I pass this out to the council?
You can hand it to us.
Thank you.
Maybe you can give me each one of these, too.
I haven't had a chance to get down to the Americana to see where you...
I know, I'm waiting for you.
Sorry about that, I know.
And I told them you guys were going to come down and watch me play and everything, but we're having a lot of confusion down there, so I just wanted to address it. You know, as you know, you probably remember me, I was here a couple of weeks ago, and again, I'm here to talk about the new ordinance 5897 regarding street performances. I just wanted, you know, I was here speaking about my concerns about how it was going to affect my first amendment rights and a spot that I was permitted to perform in, in front of the Frida at the corner of Americana and Bran. And after doing a lot of research, I realized it wasn't going to affect me. After consulting with police and the permit office, code enforcement, public works and engineering, and taking full measurements from all the points defined in the ordinance, I feel I'm complete compliance with the new setback rules.
Sorry, we have a little confusion with the...
I know, I'm sorry. According to everybody I've talked to and all the measurements I've taken, I'm in compliance with all the setback rules, and there's more space there than anywhere else in any of the other spots that are around that area. But the ordinance has created a lot of confusion, and the guards at the Americana are not consistent with even how to interpret the ordinance or how and where to measure from. So as a result, I keep getting asked to move my position over and over, and in some cases, I'm asked not to play at all. So I spoke with the head of security over at the Americana, Michael Pashayan, and we're trying to figure out a solution so that we can all be on the same page. So he's asked me to come back here to the council and just get some clarification on a couple of terms so we know how to interpret this ordinance, because there's various interpretations, and we just, we have no straight answers. So the first term that's causing, oh, I don't even, you guys, you don't have the ordinance, do you?
Yeah, we do.
You do? You have it? Awesome. Although that's, that's something I looked at. I have one extra copy I can give you.
I'll take it.
You know, I kind of want to suggest that he make an appointment with our, yeah, Rubik, or, I mean, I don't know that we can solve this issue tonight.
If we could take his information, I would certainly, rather than have this, he's free to speak, he's free to use his time, but rather than have a back and forth, there's a member of my staff who he can talk with, along with the representative from GPD, to get, because there actually may be some flexibility versus what we thought the last time this gentleman was here. So that would be my suggestion, because I don't think any of us up here right now are prepared to give him any answers. But again, it's his time.
They've asked me to come to you, so there's only really only two terms that we're confused about.
You mean they at the Americana?
Yeah, they at the Americana. As a matter of fact, they were referring to you as they, and I go, "Who do you mean they?" And they go, "The council." And I go, "Okay." And they said, and so Mike, the, yeah, he asked me to come back and ask you what qualifies as entrance. That's one.
Okay, so, and right, and that's why we, we really don't, as far as I know, I don't, I'm speaking for myself, I can't really answer that question, but...
Is there anybody that can answer?
Well, Mr. Garcia, our city attorney...
Like I said, I think it would be better, rather than us answering your questions right here, we will, if you leave your information, we will, it's something we've been looking at, so we will get back to you. And I apologize because I thought we had sort of handled that part of it.
Well, I thought you would know better than anybody since you guys...
Well, I don't personally, but somebody on my staff does, so that's...
Well, does a property boundary...
You said there was a second question, what was it? So I know, I'm aware of what the entry to business...
Okay, well, I gave you my, what I looked up is what terms a sidewalk is, that's from the vehicle code. That outlines what a crosswalk is.
Okay.
Is that your interpretation as well?
Again, rather than giving my interpretation from the dice without having talked to my staff, we'll take their information you have, we'll take the questions that you have, and we'll get back to you, like, soon, because I know you've been waiting, and we definitely want to address the question.
Okay, do you know how to reach me?
No, I don't. If you put your information on the card...
You'll give your information to the city clerk?
And who will I be speaking with then about this?
I'll be speaking with a member of my staff.
City Attorney's Office.
Yeah, Carmen Mariano.
The City Attorney's Office.
Nice diagram, though.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Boy, that was, yeah.
I didn't have time to go to a copy thing, so I wrote each one of those.
Wow.
I just, like, made them all.
Yeah, that's pretty good, yeah. I wish I was an engineer. I'm just married to one, okay. So they'll take your information and make an appointment with you, and we'll get straightened out. From what I understand, it sounds like they're willing to give a little, so you're maybe in good shape.
Oh, you know, I talk to them, and I get along with everybody over there. The residents like me, and the kids like me, and it's like, and I'm having fun. That's why I want to, I want to make sure I'm, like, getting along with everybody. So Michael, the head of security, has been really cool with me, and he just said, you know, "We'll see what we can work out, let's talk, and we'll try to get on the same page." So...
It'll happen.
It's just music, you know?
And what kind of music do you play?
Listen, music is the best.
I'm doing, like, a lot of, like, it's just folk acoustic guitar and singing, and it's a lot of old, a lot of old folk songs, you know, like, you know, 50s, 60s, 70s, you know, Dylan, Bob Dylan, and, you know...
No Alice Cooper, right?
No, no. Bob Dylan, Beatles, and, you know, Creedence, you know, that kind of stuff, and kids love it, you know?
We'll see you down there. We'll see you there yet. Okay. Mike Moehl, thank you. Thank you. Paul.
My name is Mike Moehl, State of the City, 2017. Councilman Najarian, in the 12 years you have been in office, our Glendale Water and Power Department bond debt has grown by $259 million. Glendale Water and Power has been cannibalized by illegally transferring over $200 million from GWP to the general fund. Concerned citizens have come before council pleading not to raise water and electric rates beyond the cost of delivery. Stop the transfers and stop using GWP as the cash cow of the failed management of this city. Today, the public is learning the city will pass another $350 million bond in order to refurbish the Grayson Power Plant, on top of our already $259 million GWP bond debt. Or will the city, after depleting GWP, sell GWP, as Councilman Najarian has suggested several times? Mr. Najarian has been protecting his CalPERS union supporters' envious retirement pension benefits for years. At the same time, he has saddled our future generation of kids with unbelievable bond debt with interest. We only have an anemic $89 million in our reserve account. Councilman Najarian wants to transfer $24 million into a very special irrevocable trust, trust fund for his CalPERS union supporters. This money will be insurance, so when the city has to file for bankruptcy, this money cannot be touched by the courts. That's right, cannot be touched by the courts. We need to explore leaving the corrupt and irresponsible CalPERS system, which is the main reason this city is imploding. About three years ago, when City Manager Ochoa was hired, our retirement pension obligations to CalPERS were less than $850 million. Today, under his firm leadership, our retirement pension benefit obligation is now a whopping $1.3 billion. Glendale taxpayers guarantee annually a 7.5% rate of return on CalPERS failed investments. In the last six years, CalPERS is only earning about 1% annually on their investments. Our annual payment over the past 13 years to CalPERS has been about $20 million, and in five years, City Manager Ochoa stated it would jump to a whopping, whopping $49 million a year. Today, over 100 cities and agencies have canceled their CalPERS contract. Neither the state of California nor the federal government is going to bail us out. Right next door to Glendale is the very wealthy, low-crime city of La Cañada Flintridge, who uses county services, as does Malibu and Calabasas. Also, Santa Clarita, the third largest city in Los Angeles County, uses county services. And why do half the cities in Orange County use county services? Because, lady and gentlemen, county services are 25% less expensive and their employees' pension funds are self-funded, where the taxpayers are not on the hook for their failed investments, just like CalPERS, Mr. Ochoa. Glendale police and fire personnel are trained at the Sheriff Academy and Fire County Academy. We should keep Glendale Police Department intact, but on a trial basis only. For one or two years, we can contract with county services and only do in one or two areas of the city, and personally, what services we need in our contract. During this trial period, we can adjust services as needed. Once we have the data regarding the trial and its effect, we can analyze the facts and make proper decisions going forward. Councilmembers, with continued Band-Aid fixes, we will end up joining cities like San Bernardino and Santa Ana, who chose county services after filing for bankruptcy protection. Thank you.
Has he brought that up at the debates, the forums, going to county? Okay, I won't ask.
Yes, he has.
Okay. Next item? Thank you.
Next item is new business.
Do we have a new business? We have one.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to initiate a legal proceeding in Superior Court in order to recover workers' compensation benefits and property damage incurred as the result of a traffic accident involving a city employee and a third party. The name of the proceedings, the defendant, and the nature of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry once the action has commenced. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Second. Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Senanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Adjournment in memory of Cameron Burton.
So moved.
Second.
We adjourn at 9:12. Good night, everyone.